So, police, somebody is bound to ask the question, aren't there more important things to do for law enforcement?
Well, I think with an ordinance like this, law enforcement getting involved in this particular issue is probably going to be kind of like a last resort. With these types of ordinances, this is very much like littering. I mean, everyone knows you're not supposed to litter in a public park. There's signs up that speak to the municipal code that prohibits littering. And so, we're looking at self-enforcement. We're looking at folks who use the park, understanding that there's a new law, seeing the signs, and just following the law. It's kind of like a self-enforcement, self-responsibility. If for some reason someone is smoking and it becomes a real problem and it gets reported, then law enforcement certainly would respond and issue a ticket. And, of course, you know, we don't call the police every time someone throws a piece of trash on the ground. Maybe we should, but you're right, the police just don't, they have very important calls to handle, and I think that this would probably be a response that they would do only if called.
If I'm reading between the lines of what you just said, you're hoping that peer pressure might be a pretty strong influence here?
Well, I think what happens with any situation like this is that people, you know, the average person, most people are law-abiding, and when they realize that there's a new law that's been passed, and there's a sign that speaks to the actual municipal code section, most people, you know, obey the law. And so, what we've seen is that, actually, in case you didn't know, there has been for the last several years, a ordinance prohibits smoking anywhere near a children's play area, and we've had signs up in the parks regarding that. And we found that most folks see the sign and they follow the law.
That's a very good point. Certainly, Los Angeles is not the only municipality where smoking is banned under certain circumstances, certain places. Can you give us some ideas about some of the other places that have taken similar measures?
Well, we did do a small survey of a number of cities in Southern California, and we did find that a number of cities, places like Glendale, Burbank, Santa Monica, some other cities, Santa Barbara, are either already enacted no-smoking ordinances in their parks, or we're looking at doing the same thing. So, it is becoming a very common thing for cities to have a ban on smoking in public parks. And I think that folks who utilize the parks, you know, are really asking for it as well because, are asking for the ban, I mean, because they're out, they're exercising, they're doing healthy activities in the park, and to have people smoking in the park is just not a healthy thing when people are trying to exercise.
An ordinance like this, which was sent forth with to the mayor's office, when would this officially take effect?
Well, typically, an ordinance like this would go into effect about 30 days after the mayor actually signs the ordinance. So, the ordinance just went through council yesterday, so as soon as the mayor signs it, I'd say maybe within 30 days after that.
This really isn't going after smokers, and it's not like we're about to put a huge no-smoking sign at the state line. Really, this is a matter of public health, and I presume also, as a matter of fact, is a matter of public safety, because of course, this is an extremely dry summer.
That's correct, and I think that the council is really looking at the fact that this is a public health issue. Again, as I stated a few minutes ago, when people come to public parks, they often come to engage in a physical activity. They're either gonna jog, or participate in sports, or do any number of activities. And a lot of the people who come to parks are bringing children. We have a lot of senior citizens, many of whom have health problems and concerns already. And secondhand smoke is a very hazardous substance to be in the air around people who are breathing deeply during physical activity, and particularly around our children, seniors, people with health concerns. So, I think it's very prudent and very wise and very healthy to say, look, when you come to a public park, this is a place where families, where groups are going to engage in healthy activities. You know, we're not only looking at smoking, but we've also looked at the types of foods that are served in our programs as well, and the city has adopted a zero-trans-fat policy as well.
You mentioned family, recreation, kids, lots of things to do. What are some of the other things that you have going on? It's a great summer, the weather's terrific.
It's been a great summer, it's been a really active summer for the Parks Department. One of the biggest programs that we operate here in L.A. City Rec. and Parks during the summer is our Summer Day Camp, where we have, on any given day, somewhere in the neighborhood of 70,000 children participating in day camp across the city. These are activities where kids are able to do swimming, arts and crafts, they go on field trips to places like Disneyland, Knott's Berry Farm. So, it's a great program. We also have all of our pools, we have over 60 pools in the city of Los Angeles system, and those pools are all up and running. We have junior lifeguard programs, we have swim lessons, family swim lessons, all different types of activities for folks to partake. We also have summer basketball leagues, we have the Summer Sports Academy that takes place out at Hanson Dam, where we teach kids special skills about soccer and softball and other activities. So, there's a lot of things happening, and anyone who wants further information could look at the department's website at laparks.com.
Also, you kind of tripped right on by it, but there are actually some employment opportunities, and even for kids.
Absolutely, we're always looking for Summer Day Camp counselors, for our resident camp counselors, and we're also always looking for lifeguards. So, again, the website is a good place for folks to go if they're interested in job opportunities for the summer.
By the way, speaking of summer, how long is summer? In other words, how long do the pools, for example, stay open? How long does the lifeguard program go this year?
Well, our pools open in late June, and they close the Labor Day weekend. So, this year, though, we're looking at possibly extending the season for a week or so, so they may stay open a little bit longer.
That sounds great, a terrific summer and lots to do. Assistant General Manager of the Department of Recreation and Parks, Kevin Regan, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thanks for having me, appreciate it.
Your Los Angeles City Council, in a unanimous vote, approved the ordinance that would ban smoking in all city parks. We'll now go to the mayor for his approval. L.A. City View is the government-access capable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at (213) 473-3978. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending August 3, 2007. On behalf of Reggie Parks and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Ovarian cancer is one of the leading causes of death in American women. Each year, 20,000 women are diagnosed, and nearly 15,000 will die. Our best defense against the dangers of ovarian cancer is early detection. A woman's chance for survival is greater if the cancer is found early. So, please, be sure to have your annual physical, a pelvic exam, and a regular blood test. Contact the Ovarian Cancer Coalition for more information on signs and symptoms. Early detection can help save lives.
Your city, your channel.[571.66]
Good morning. This is Tuesday, August 7th, 2007. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Welcome to our council chambers. For those of you that cannot be here in person, you can call council phone as well as go on to our city website to be able to access our meeting this morning on your computer. I think we have a quorum. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present and a quorum. Madam President.
Thank you. If you could, first item of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves. Mr. Labange seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
Madam President, this is Tuesday and there is a flag solid agendas for today.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Ms. Perry if she would to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. We could ask everyone to please rise.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Please place your right hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Clerk.
Madam President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
We'll go through the items first and then we will go to public comment.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there has been a request to continue item 20 to September 19th.
That will be continued to the 19th.
There's also been a request to continue item 25 to September 11th.
Unless there's objection, that will be continued to September 11th.
On the regular agenda, item 1 is the Figueroa Court Order Business Improvement District Notice for Public Hearing. Council should close the hearing and the ballot tabulation will be on Friday.
We do have cards on that today, so we're required to have a public hearing, I assume, so that item will be called special.
Items 2 through 8 are street lighting district items notice for public hearing. Council is expected to have 12 members. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
We will hold those on the desk.
Items 9 through 12 are street lighting district items notice for public hearing as well. Council should continue the hearings and ordinances to August 17th.
We do have cards on item 13, so...
This is actually items 9 through 12, Madam President.
I'm sorry. 9 through 12. If there's no specials on 9 through 12, we will continue those to the next appropriate meeting.
And then item 13 is the solid waste fee increase notice for public hearing.
Okay. That will be called special by cards.
Items 14 through 19 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Any specials, colleagues, on items 4 through 19? Item 19 by Mr. Alarcon. 17 by Ms. Hahn.
What's 19 called?
19 was called special by Mr. Alarcon, yes. Any other specials, colleagues, 14 through 19? Again, public hearings have been held on this item.
And item 14 is an ordinance. Do you wish to hold that?
We'll hold that on the desk. Any other specials? If not, Madam Clerk, call the roll on the remaining of remainder of those items. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next items.
Items 20 through 40 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Any specials? And we do, Smith is not for some reason, he is here, so we need to take him off the case. Specials, Mr. Rosendahl.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, okay. See if any other cards. We do have cards on item 21. Any other specials, colleagues?
Madam President, there's also cards on item 38.
Thirty-eight. Okay. That will be called special. Another item, 38? Okay. If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll.
Madam President, item 22 is also an ordinance. Do you wish to hold that?
We will hold that as well. Remainder of the items, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next items.
Item, on the continuation agenda, item 41 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Anyone wish to call that special? Yes, Mr. Parks?
Weezer held that because he wasn't here on Friday, so if we can just hold the continuation.
We'll hold that on the desk until Mr. Weezer arrives. Thank you.
We have an instruction we'd like to add to it.
Okay. We'll hold that on the desk. Next.
Madam President, that does take care of the items called special for the regular meeting. Do you wish to recess the regular and go into the special?
We'll recess and go to the special.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present and a quorum.
Thank you. First order?
So one item agenda, item 42 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. This is confirmation of a commissioner. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, and we do have a card on that as well.
And do you wish to continue that over to the regular meeting and then adjourn the special?
That will be the order. Thank you. Next.
Now, do you wish to go back to public comment?
We will go back to public comment. Like to follow, have the following individuals be prepared to speak. Zumadog, Michael Hunt, Matt Dowd. They'll be our three first speakers.
Ready? Yes, Zumadog is always prepared to speak. Good morning, City of Los Angeles, and my name's Zumadog. I'd like to talk today about some things going on in the city. First of all, I find the number one problem we need to be aware of in the city is the privatization of public funds. The privatization of public funds through nonprofit organizations. It's happening in LAUSD through charter school reform. It's happening with park money, check, prop, K, healthcare, infrastructure, and I'm very concerned about nonprofits with cronyism, family members, board, the board members, front-end load management. Let's talk about LAUSD. You want to build a charter school? Well, everybody is for privatization of more schools, I'm sure, and it's a good concept. The only problem with the theory is that the contracts, the management contracts to build the schools end up having front-end loaded management contracts. The term is front-end load management, meaning that an inappropriate excessive amount of the money for the project goes to management, cars, perks, family members. I'm concerned with a lot of conflict of interest regarding nonprofits. I know that the city is giving money to a lot of the nonprofits. I want to know what city employees operate these nonprofits? What council member, family, spouses sit on boards of nonprofits that the city is giving money to? I'd like to see an audit of all this. And again, Zumadog, after a year and four months of investigating fraud, waste, and abuse at City Hall, is here to say beware of charter school reform and the privatization of public money that is being used to dedicate land for things that we have not decided. There's no public input. And nowhere in the charter does it say that City Council is allowed to sit as a state agency making decisions with CRA over public land and parks and money and decisions. Go to zumatimes.com. I write about it more. My name's Zumadog. Beware of the bamboozle.
Michael Hunt.
Thank you. Welcome back to City Council. I see we've been bumped off the schedule for number 20 again, but I want to talk about the 4215, and I'm glad it's been bumped. We have approximately probably another six more lawsuits coming to you guys, which is a really good thing. I think it'd teach the city a lesson once you them in their pocket. Number two, it'll probably be over on the 15th. The 4215 will probably be over for a lot of people. The city won't have anything to negotiate after it comebacks from the Second Appellate Court. Number three, we gave you guys ample opportunity to work with us in each and every way that we thought that would benefit the city. Here's what I don't understand. You have these bunch of lawyers trying to figure out the boardwalk, and it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure this out. You have 320 spaces as four squares apiece. Give the pagodas back to the entertainers, and there you have a great ordinance. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure this out. But sometimes you have to be aware of what's going on in your own community. I see that the 11th district is not here, so he's not taking notes. Like I said, at four squares apiece, you have 320 spaces. On any given Sunday, you only have 220 vendors. On the biggest Sunday, probably Labor Day, you only have 225 vendors at four spaces apiece, so there's not really a problem. It's just a problem with the city's mathematics. Change it back over, hand it back over. It'll be done. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Matt Dowd. Matt Dowd will be followed by Tonette Hayes, Noel Weiss.
Thank you, yeah, Matt Dowd, for the Outlaws. Don't need to talk about 4215 because that, you know, the attorneys, they already lost at this. The attorneys lost that for you. They screwed up, open and shut case, that's over. I want to talk about the freeways that run through the city of Los Angeles. Now, we talked, the mayor's talking about doing things for the kids. The first thing we can do is slow people down. Two LAPD officers died out on the freeway here, and why? Primarily it's speed. People are driving 80 miles an hour through this city. Motor vehicles are at least 20 to 30% more inefficient at those higher speeds. So there's a pollution factor, there's an environmental factor, there's an energy consumption factor, and then there's a death factor, and I'm sick of seeing people dying because of speed. And these are LAPD officers. I don't know if you've seen the video, Mr. Labange and Janice Hahn. How are you doing today? I'm talking about LAPD officers dying on the freeway. So I talked about a multi-jurisdictional committee that can organize these things. This is some, it's a county and a state issue because the state runs the freeways through here and the county. We need to get together or else just override them and say, your freeway comes through my city and it's polluting my kids because of the excessive speed. Pull the speed down 10 miles an hour in the city of Los Angeles, and then we'll get people from 80 down to 70 and maybe less. Those people wouldn't have died. Multi-jurisdictional coordination with the city of Los Angeles, with the other, with the other county and state authorities. Mr. Labange, thank you. Stop trying to interrupt important public comment.
Yes, Deanna.
And for the public's benefit, all remarks should be to the council as a whole and not to individual council members.
Tonette, please, Mr., please. Ms. Hayes.
Good morning, council. My name is Tonette Hayes, and I'm here this morning with Bishop H.H. Brookins, sitting here, the producer of Fox 11 News, others, requesting a square be named after Bishop Brookins on the corner of Western and Adams. We originally wanted to have a street named after Bishop, but thought about the inconvenience of the economic problems that would be caused by the business owners as well as the residents in the area, and reconsidered and asked, you know, thought about asking for a square. Bishop Brookins is the founder and also a member of fame, First AME Church. And so with his strong contribution to the community throughout the years and certainly through working with various politicians, we thought that it was more than appropriate to have at least a square named after him. So that's our request this morning, and we feel the bishop is more than deserving of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Noel Weiss, followed by General, I think it's Dogon, I can't say if it's D-O-G-O-N, followed by Chuck Tenen.
Council members, good morning. Members of the public, good morning. I want to kind of issue an athletic challenge to the members of the council. We just had the Junior Olympics in Los Angeles for the first time in a generation. We lost the opportunity to have the real Olympics, but it kind of inspired me when I ran into Mr. Weezer in the stairwell. I think there's, our youth is not as physically fit as it needs to be, and I think it's important for the council members, because I know Mr. Labange wants to lose some weight too, to basically set, holding it in. That's very good. Hopefully you got that on camera. Basically, I think it's for all our political leaders, I think what I want to do is issue a challenge to you. I think once a quarter, every one of you should have a contest, and I think all the lobbyists should put $100 into a pot, and the winner and the loser has, it's split, and from, we have a race from the bottom, floor one, up to floor 22, okay? And my money is actually on Janice Hahn because she's the best athlete on the city council, okay? But, including beating Mr. Garcetti, all right? It may be close with Mr. Parks. Mr. Labange, I'm not sure. Bottom line is, winner gets to split that difference and the loser also. And then every quarter, we'll see how all you guys improve. So that's my public comment for today.
Thank you. Followed by Chuck Tenen, followed by Yvonne Michelle Autry. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Parks, before you speak, I so apologize. Mr. Parks.
I just like to comment on the issue of Bishop Brookins, and I don't think anyone can ignore nor disagree with his impact on the city of Los Angeles. We were not aware they were going to come today, but I talked with Mr. Wesson, and although I'm having trouble with boundaries this week, I think Adams and Western kind of splits between the 8th and the 10th districts. So we'd be glad to work together and do something that would appropriately identify his contribution to the city of LA.
I want to support that, so I want to second that because I think that's absolutely right. So anything I can do to help push that forward, I'd be happy to. Your contributions are immeasurable.
And I would support it as well. Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. My apologies for, General.
General Dogon, LA can. I am here to speak of the many acts of police misconduct that's running out of Central Division. You gave LAPD $6 million to enforce a 50-block area and only $2 million for homeless, homeless services. The results of this misuse of funds have resulted in illegal activities by Central Division officers, such as within the last 45 days, four women has been given Rodney King-style beatings. Some of these beatings had taken place after the woman was handcuffed. These beatings go hand in hand with other forms of illegal searches and seizures, harassment and arrest on a daily, on a daily basis. Central Division is daily violating the Fifth Drell Injunction and every other injunction. This is a result of your misuse of funds and you giving LAPD the power and resources to deal with Skier Row as opposed of you putting money into areas that will solve the problem. When all is said and done, we, the people, will hold this council responsible, right? You hear me? I said, we, the people, will hold this council responsible, and we will prevail in the end. All power to the people.
Chuck Tenen, followed by Yvonne Michelle Autry, followed by Jacqueline Coltrun, Coleman. Mr. Tenen, welcome.
Good morning. Good morning, council members, President Gruel. Recently, Wendy Gruel said in an article in the Daily News, "We must acknowledge that increased density increases congestion with regard to traffic and housing." Yet to date, the Department of Transportation has not been able to estimate the traffic impact on Magnolia Boulevard where there's massive horrific, horrific development taking place in a small area that she proclaimed a hazardous street with misleading figures. Yet they talk about creating a model. What about a model on this street? In March of this year, Councilmember Wendy Gruel introduced a motion to do a street assessment, a cumulative one, on a hazardous street, Magnolia Boulevard. It was 07/8/20, and it was supposed to be the Transportation Department reporting back in 60 days, which no one's heard anything. If Herb Wesson and Tony Cardenas and the Housing Committee can put through a motion in 12 days for $5 million to help the Housing Department, to help people in need of housing, people like me, then why is it taking six months? And yet what happened to the motion? Yet, certain issues on this massive development. The transportation engineer denied Wendy Gruel's motion and also made a statement about making left turns into about 100-unit condominium development that's saying, oh, even though it's a hazardous street and it's dangerous, and they have to make the left turn because there's no other way to get into the building. Well, gee, that's not a safe issue. Why, why, why has this motion not gone forward and why hasn't the Transportation Department reported back? Is it build first, fix later, or don't fix at all, or let these people? You ought to take a look at that street. It looks terrible with all the graffiti and everything on that street. It's going to be a terrible thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Yvonne, followed by Jacqueline.
Thank you again. My name is Yvonne Michelle Autry, and I'm here to address the council with Los Angeles Community Action Network. First of all, I'd like to say, I think it's odd how what originally no one wanted has become so desirable and so attractive. I'm speaking of the housing situation downtown. I've lived here four and a half years, and I think it's horrendous, this gentrification effort to push people into the street, low-income housing people who have enjoyed this housing for 15, 20, 30 years. I've lived here 40 years, almost 41 years. I was born in this city, and I think it's a crime, and I think it's a worse travesty that you people are doing nothing about it. I have senior citizens, veterans and disabled people that are in my building that are, they're threatened now with homelessness in one year when the LA, when the permit for subsidized housing expires. And it's your responsibility to maintain this housing. Like I said, what was once undesirable is now so desirable because of these investors. And I think it's horrible that you're using them to sway any sense of consciousness or judicial righteousness that you might have had at one time, or maybe you never did. And I'd also like to bring to your attention what Dogon had brought out about the beatings. I live here, I'm a black woman. I know of a black woman who was beaten mercilessly in front of my godmother's building, and she was cited with a misdemeanor. In my mind, that harkens back to 20, 30, 40, 50 years ago, you know, when my parents were in Texas and what was happening in Montgomery. I hope you're not allowing this system to return to a, to a system where black people, people of color and poor people have no civil rights, okay? This is a hidden return to white supremacy, hidden agendas for, you know, New World Order, you know, type of conservative, a control and governmental implementation of power. And I hope that you would, we're going to hold you responsible and accountable because this is ridiculous.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jacqueline, followed by Oscar Johnson, followed by Armando Herman, and then we'll be going out to the San Fernando Valley.
Good morning, council members. My name is Jacqueline Cothran, and I am here as a neighborhood watch of the Alexandria-Beverly neighborhood. I have lived there for over 40 years, and in the last 15 years, in the last, in the first 15 years, we're very closely with our departed beloved John Farrow and Tom Labange, and we had an excellent neighborhood. It was clean. We didn't have much problems there. However, for approximately the last 15 years, we had had a lot of problems, primarily right now, and I have tried to work with Mr. Garcetti's office for at least, at least five years, and nothing has been done with regards to the vendors that are stationed on the street of Beverly between Kenmore and Edgeman. It is an unseen sight to see the waste of papers, the people selling out of baskets and out of shopping carts. And I have, I have tried to work very, very hard and very closely with arson from Mr. Garcetti's office, but there has been no response at all whatsoever. So I really need to address this issue because the neighborhood is coming up, but we really need to have a strong control of this out-of-control vendors who are polluting our streets and our neighborhoods. And I love my neighborhood. I lived there for quite a few years. I have also lived in, in the Griffith Park area where Mr. Labange is currently one of the members, and I enjoy very much, you know, the work that Mr. Labange has done on both ages.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Labange. Oscar Johnson and Armando Herman.
Good morning, council members. My name is Oscar Johnson, pro activist for the current citizen of the community of Los Angeles, and I like to almost stimulate how we are represented to government through this political process that the African-American people have been eliminated. We have been excluded, it seems as though that the candidates who we put in public office, they only respond to the people, I guess, who put them in office, and if you're not a part of that, that situation where you overlook. But anyway, but I think this should be a free enterprise. We should be distributed, the resource should be distributed equally. And I'd be sure to insist that government put more responsibility on our citizens and that we should find a way to care for all living members in our society because that what happened at the King's Hospital was very unacceptable, and that place should be closed down immediately. But I guess when they say they get something like $200 million a year, I guess there's a lot of reason to let it stay, let it stay open. And our police department, they really have harassed African-American homeless on a daily basis, seems as though they don't have anything else to do, and there's no one accountable for their actions, seems like we can go to on our everyday being oppressed by the government that's supposed to represent us. And, but I always stress that we should have more to come to the homeless, to bring something dignity in their life and our life also, that we have on a daily basis and monthly and yearly basis, we get millions, millions of dollars a year, but we have no resources to reach the homeless as though it's just, we just represent money to, hate to, we just represent money, that money if we up and money if we down. If you're black, we just represent money, but we don't represent the buying source, the buying source. We're only consumers, we're only consumers. We see how our neighborhood have business, and our neighborhood have been taken away from us by foreigners, that none of us have taken away our business in the Afro community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. If we could please have everyone take their conversations outside. It's difficult for us to hear our public speakers. Yes, Armando.
Yes, can we please have a quorum? Can we get some silence, please? My name's Armando Herman, and I'm activist in the community of Boyle Heights. Throughout the months, I've brought this to the attention of Mr. Weezer. It is graffiti destroys neighborhoods and communities, and I'm pretty sure many of us are familiar with this, but the problem goes beyond this. This has to do with gentrification, exactly what the public was talking about, where they bring the cost of living up, they bring in too many people to a certain community and overcrowding, and they also inflate the rentals in your homes. So I feel sorry for all of those who are affected by that. I'm fortunate that I am not. But today, I'm here to point out how CD14 has ignored this proliferation and surge of graffiti in the Los Angeles area. All of you see this on the freeway. All of you are witnesses from your cars, from your homes and from the streets you walk on. Is this the type of city Los Angeles wants us to be? Should we be looked down upon in this matter? There is just too much cronyism in City Hall, and it should come to an end. There is too much corruption. Yes, City Attorney's Office, you should be aware of it because it is your involvement to apply the justice the way justice is meant to be. And before my time ends, I'm going to read something from the Eastern Group Publications. It says, "A dramatic upsurge in graffiti vandalism despite all the programs and laws institutes to fight it has failed because we believe that smoking pot or marijuana, which too often leads to using more dangerous drugs, will also lead criminals who act with graffiti and tagging in the same mannerism with more violent and felony of crimes." Oh, it is, it is disgusting that we continue to allow our tax-paying dollars to go to waste and not really communicate with the public.
Thank you very much. We are going to go out to the valley. Donna Pearman, followed by Sharon Brewer.
Hi, Zumadog. Glad to see you. I love zumatimes.com. First, I really got to thank Council Lady Janice Hahn for her sweetness to me when I was here last month in Van Nuys. So here goes. Thank you. On the way, I saw five cop cars chasing a car. I know it's dangerous with the criminals and terrorists out there to boot, yet guards in Van Nuys Chamber feel the priority is to make nobody eat and drink in the chamber, even if it's only water or snacking on a few grapes. Yet councilmen and women can either snack or go in the other room that's designed for them to take a quick bite, but public can't, or they'll miss their turn. It says, "A double standard." Sergeant Ruiz doesn't want public to eat or drink only in council... Sergeant Ruiz doesn't want public to eat or drink only if councilmen or women can eat. That's not right. Please, council members, please use a little common sense with your rules. It's a healthy issue. Sometimes people have to eat. I also like to talk about the CRA, our city is bankrupt and trying, crying about Proposition 13. Yet the CRA with its grand average of projects using all our money. CRA is responsible for our city employees not getting a proper cost of living increase. Their responsibility is not enough money. The mass transmittance transit is terrible, some blocks like DeSoto Avenue, the bus only runs once an hour but has no other bus running. DeSoto does not like have a dash. We don't have enough money for our schools and other necessities to top it off. You have new ways to either raise property taxes or other fees like the trash free. CRA needs to give our money back. We probably have a surplus even. Smarikum Fogler says private development is fine. I would add, within public's approval, the CRA should only be used for public use. Same with property taxes. It should be used for the public. You should be having our money over here with the public. It's a proper way to do it and I don't think it's fair that you guys are taking off and more will be said on Sharon Brewer. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Brewer.
Hi, Sharon Brewer. Encino Neighborhood Council, June 28, 2007, election challenge update. Friday, August 3, I sent an email to Gary de la Rosa, Human Relations Commission, asking about the 30-day timeframe for him to rule on the ENC's nine election challenges. As of this morning, I have not received anything from him and I believe the 30 days are up. There's an article in the Encino Sun, August 4 to the 10th issue, it says, "ENC slog through election challenges at July board meeting." It talks about the challenges. I now like to take my time and address the rules of the Los Angeles City Council as amended January 2007, specifically Number 19. It says, "All members shall be in their respective seats at said hour of each regular council meeting and at the time set for the session of any adjourned or special meeting." Number 24 has to do with, "Each member shall attend all regular special meetings except for illness unless a leave of absence has been granted by a majority vote at a regular meeting at which a quorum is present. No leave of absence shall be granted if such will result in a quorum not being present for that meeting." I state that because of the meeting tomorrow being canceled because there won't be a quorum and also...
Ms. Brewer, tomorrow's being canceled because of the funeral for an officer. And we're going to that funeral. Please continue.
Okay, but at the last meeting, because it wasn't in the line of duty, there was a question about it. And Number 27, "No member shall be considered present unless the member is within this council chamber." I know that there's been questions about that because when you don't see them, you're wondering whether in fact there is a quorum in the chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker here is Henry Steven, and I'm sorry, I can't read your last name.
Excuse me, good morning, gentlemen and ladies. I have a concern about the Martin Luther King and Figueroa incident, that's the district number eight. In the restaurants I go into, it looks like they want to tell you what they want and then so there are no discrimination signs. I see signs that say, "We serve," that you can, we refuse to serve you. I worked in the NAACP in the Southland, I'm out here in California. I've been here since 97 and I think it's predictable that you don't have a different variety of people working there. It's supposed to be an integrated restaurant, integrated people go in there and eat and I don't see why integrated people can't work behind the counter and be perks and managers in the restaurant. And I think I have seen an improvement since I've been here in California through the bus transportation and all that and all things like that. It's a lot of improvement. I've been here since I've been putting up my time and effort to try to keep things flowing at a normal pace. Thank you. I don't have too much to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes a public comment period. Before we go to the next item, I know Mr. LaBange wanted to reconsider and call special item Number 26. If we could open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the votes. 12 ayes, that item will be called special by Mr. LaBange. Next item.
Madam President, do you wish to take up the ordinances now that there are 12 members?
Yes, please.
That would be Items 2 through 8, 14, and 22.
Okay, colleagues, those items are now before us. We had held these on the desk based on waiting for 12 members of the council to be here. Madam Clerk, if you would open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the votes. 12 ayes, those items have been approved. Next item.
Madam President, do you wish to take up the commissioner appointment?
Yes, we'll take up the commissioner, item Number 42.
And that is the appointment of Ms. Yoli Flores Aguilar to the Commission for Children, Youth, and Their Families.
Mr. LaBange, have we seen?
You could set that on the table, she's expected this morning.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 1 was called special for cards from the public.
Thank you. If we could ask James Gilson, Margaret Farnham, Steve Talavera, Steve Gibson, and Bingham Cherry.
Madam President and members of the council, I'm Jim Gilson. I'm Vice President and General Counsel of the Natural History Museum Foundation and a member of the Figueroa Corridor Business Improvement District Board and Executive Committee of the Board. If there are no protests to this, for this item, we'll be very brief and just ask for your support for this extension of the duration and expansion of the size of this corridor. Its success has been proven by the fact that both at our last extension renewal and this current one, we have been asked by neighboring communities to expand the district so that they can tax themselves and benefit from the services that the district provides. There's no better proof that what we're doing is benefiting the community and the folks who are paying for the benefits are the owners of the properties themselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The cards that I have here are all people who have marked them as being for the proposal. Do you wish to speak? Again, that's Margaret Farnham, for the proposal, Steve Talavera, for the proposal, Steve Gibson, for the proposal. Is that correct? All right, that will close the public hearing portion. There are no speakers in the queue, so Mr. Clerk, if you would please open the roll.
And Madam President, actually, you should just close the hearing today and the tabulation will be on Friday.
Thank you very much. Public hearing is closed on that matter. Next item.
Item 13 was called special for cards from the public.
First speaker on this item, item Number 13, will be Mr. Zuma Dog.
Yes, good evening, good morning, good afternoon, Los Angeles. I'd like to talk right now about Item 30. We're talking about solid waste collection, recycling, and disposal fee. That's right, city. Last year was trash collection fees for 1,000 new cops. They raised the trash collection fees, but we have not seen the cops yet. Raising taxes everywhere, fees, hikes, taxes, bonds. They keep putting more and more money, they're taxing the middle class out of the region, and now they wanna add solid waste. I say no. I say no more money for these things. Here, let's read what this is. Let's read this outrage. You know what? You wouldn't need to do solid waste removal fees if you were not squandering in a fraudulent, wasteful, and abusive fashion the public money and handing it over to everybody where it all gets wasted, then you don't have enough to get the stuff done. Then you have to do things like this. And right here, what they wanna do, oh, good, it's only gonna tax single-family dwelling and multiple-family dwellings. All right, they want more money. So let us suffice to say, Zuma Dog says I'd like to see a no vote on this. And I'd also like to say, I see way too many unanimous votes in this chambers. You can't tell me what's good in Compton is good for the other side of the city. All right, I know Compton said, you know what I'm saying, one area and the other area. No, there's way too much unanimous votes and that's cahootsism. And the city's going bankrupt because of your fraud, waste, and abuse. And this ties into that. So let's just meditate for a moment on the fact that I say no more fee hikes for trash collection for single-family units when there's hikes and fees and taxes and they can't even afford anything and there's a whole new wave of homelessness as a result of this. How about if the middle class can save some money? How about if they can afford housing? How about if not everything goes to either the low-end people or the high-end people? There's people in between and they help this city too. And we've had enough of this taxation. I say hell no.
Our next speaker in the San Fernando Valley will be Marty Wall, followed by Donna Pearman.
Good morning. The proposed acceleration of the waste fee before you today is wrong on several levels. First, you've not consulted with neighborhood councils as required by the city charter. You know, the city is really vigorous in enforcing neighborhood council following of the rules, but we expect the city to follow them as well and not just when it's convenient to do so. By the way, I noticed that the agenda does not include the community impact statement filed on this item by the Chatsworth Neighborhood Council. Second, the ostensible reason for the fee hike and the justification you gave the taxpayers last year was to hire more police. As has been recently commented, we've been paying the increased fees for over a year now and our patrol coverage in the Northwest Valley remains dismal. And that's not just my opinion, but that of our senior lead officer, his predecessor, and members of this council is expressed in their recent newsletters. Finally, the schedule for the fee increases was set just last year. Claiming now that it must be accelerated suggests either bad faith with the taxpayers when you passed the ordinance originally, or very poor planning ability and/or spending control on your part. I urge you to defer your decision, go back to the neighborhood councils, and see if you can convince them that this action makes any sense. Thank you.
Donna Pearman?
Donna Pearman. In the San Fernando Valley? Yeah. I love what Zuma Dog says. Anyway, more against, it's more against the small homeowners and the single-family dwellers. I'm against this new fee. I don't feel it's necessary for this solid fee, trash fee. I say no more money also. If you didn't let the CRA take the money, you wouldn't have to have the new fee hikes. We have to get whatever, and we never get whatever you promise us when you add these fees. You say this time it's for the cops, this time it's for health purposes, and then you just like to add up more fees and more fees and more fees. In the meantime, people has to add over to the rent and the people can't afford to live anywhere and then they get thrown out of the house and I say no more to these fees.
Thank you very much. Wilma Wilson.
I have a comment about the proposed solid waste fee and I thought I'd be addressing 12 people and I don't have 12 people even looking at me up there. In fact, there aren't 12 people seated, but I'm gonna go on. When LA began its recycling program in 1989, homeowners were told the program would pay for itself. And for a short time, the contents of our green bins were turned into mulch, packaged, and sold, thus generating income for the city. Glass, paper, and aluminum were put in yellow baskets and if we took these same things to recycling centers, we were given cash, so we assumed the city got money for these same things. And recycling is now more popular, additional items were added and accepted, and now we fill up these great big blue bins. Now, contents of our green bins are turned into free mulch and on any given day, you can go up to Lopez Canyon, truckload after truckload is carted away by gardeners who sell it to their customers, thus generating income for their businesses, not the city. And contents of the blue bins are removed by transients, pushing illegally obtained shopping carts and identity thieves alike, thus inviting crime into our otherwise safe neighborhoods. Why isn't the city keeping its promise to sell our recyclables so it can generate income, repeal the solid resources fee which was never approved by voters? If the Department of Sanitation became self-sufficient, the money now supporting them could pay for additional police. 29 years ago, I volunteered my time to unstate Prop. 13 and I really resent the city's efforts to undermine my work. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here today. I don't see any speaker on the queue from the city council. Oh, I'm sorry, Matt Dowd, I apologize. She had called your name.
Thank you. So yeah, this is hearing protests about this trash, solid waste collection fee, recycling and disposal. I'm sure the mayor is behind this one, 'cause apparently he has some trash to throw out and some recycling to do.
Please focus on the issue before us.
I'm not gonna go easy on them. It's called ethics. And now what you're doing here is unethical. We definitely need police and the city needs money, but you're wasting it with these attorneys who don't know what they're doing. Add up how many lawsuits, what are the payouts to the city? What are the one at Long Beach, that $40 million or whatever it was to that company over that leasing? I mean, I'm way off the topic. Why aren't you stopping me on that? They're not very competent, so we need to change the city attorney, fire Rocky. That's what I'm calling for.
He's not on topic right now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That closes public comment. Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. 12 ayes. Thank you. I know our commissioner has arrived, Mr. LaBange.
Yeah, but before we ask our commissioner to come up forth with us on that matter, and if anyone would like to discuss this issue with me, I'll be on the ropes. I understand some of them are disappointed. No one likes fees, but it's gonna make the city cleaner and make our streets better and our quality of life improve. Madam President, thank you. And at this time, I'd like you to call on the appointment of our new, reappointment of a very special commissioner.
Item 42, yes. Please, come on up, Yoli.
Call the item.
Welcome.
Go right there, yeah.
Mr. LaBange.
Good, okay.
We do have one public comment card maybe before we do that.
Okay.
We'll go ahead. Zuma Dog, did you have a public comment?
Okay. Okay, yes, 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 LAUSD. That is correct, ladies and gentlemen. The biggest item that I have spoken about over the past year is LAUSD. We had the AB 1381 shady mayoral takeover unconstitutional, found illegal, kicked out of court, all the money and time wasted. Well, now we have the mayor's personally-backed appointee, I mean, he personally funded Yoli Aguilar's LAUSD board campaign with privately raised money. And if you read the LA Times, it says that this privately raised money was in conflict because the people donating to the mayor's LAUSD fund that got Yoli elected also had projects pending mayoral approval. And I say that's a conflict of interest. And this organization here is called the Los Angeles Unified District Commission for Children, Youth, and Their Families. And that, my friends, is the organization that was involved with the mayor during AB 1381. That's the facilitation organization. They were gonna be the facilitators. Well, I hate to break it to you, but AB 1381 was unconstitutional, it's illegal, they got kicked to the curb, and now we're left with a big mess and we've got the mayor trying to, and let's say some of the things, here are some of the things that the Children's Youth and Their Families Board wanted to do, their committee wanted to do. When they were, Committee on Effective School Governments, they wanted no committee meetings. No committee meetings, reduced public input. They wanted to raise the spending limits allowed for the inspector general to $3 million without approval. LAUSD, July 3, their entire order of business for the year was passed without committee, without public input. Nobody decided for these things. It's a big bamboozle. The entire computer file came off the mayor's computer. I didn't know he was setting the agenda for the school board 'cause it was unconstitutional. So I say no, I do not want a mayoral-backed candidate running on this committee when it's been used with private money that was pending approvals on mayoral projects. It's a lot of conflict of interest. I say look for public input to be squelched. No committee meetings and a lot of bad things from LAUSD. You watch ZumaTimes.com, this is a big deal. We got a major takeover of private money through this charter system and Belmont, $400 million for Belmont, let me talk about that. It's through this type of stuff that LAUSD...
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Matt Dowd.
Zuma Dog Beck? Was it Dave Elliott? I can never tell. But yeah, I gotta weigh in on this one. The Venice people are here. We got screwed over and we don't wanna get screwed over anymore. Now we're looking at all the issues and this is a big one. I agree with Zuma Dog. The mayor is not to be trusted right now. The whole AB 1381 school thing was shady. It's under the auspices of doing things for kids, but it really wasn't. And the courts found that too. They tried to take over control and now they're doing it another way by electing members to the school board. And this is the replacement for Margaret Poindexter Lamott, who was against AB 1381 as well. So yeah, you got me fired up on this one because it's shady, 'cause it involves the mayor of Los Angeles, Antonio Villarogosa. I'm Matt Dowd, Channel 35. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. LaBange.
Thank you very much. Item 42 before us, members of the council, is the appointment... Item 42 before us, members of the council, is the appointment of Ms. Yoli Flores Aguilar to our Commission on Children, Youth, and Family, and she has the interest of children, youth, and family of all of Los Angeles. I'm proud that she was elected to serve the 5th district of the school board, the office of the 5th district, and it covers much of my district as well, and I would like you to hear her passion and how she, as all of us do, feels strongly about making what's best for children, youth, and their families in the city. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Labange. President Gruel, thank you for having me here, and I am quite pleased and honored to be appointed to the Commission for Children, Youth, and Their Families. It feels like a welcome back home, as many of you might remember. Early in my career, worked here for the City of Los Angeles, worked for the Department of Water and Power, creating their Work and Family Program, working with the mayor at the time on childcare issues, and then later becoming the Director of Childcare Policy and Planning for the City of LA. So it does feel like a welcome back home, and I'm thrilled at the opportunity. I think that with the current leadership that we have at the Commission for Children, Youth, and Their Families, and our interest in beginning to bridge cities and schools and county, working across jurisdictions, looking at innovative ways to serve our kids, joint use, innovative programming across the city through collaboration with the various city departments, I think that the opportunity here is great. I see a time where the stars are aligning across a number of our jurisdictions to focus on the well-being of children and their families, and I will look absolutely forward to continuing my work. This is my life's passion, continuing my work to serve the children of the City of Los Angeles, as I do my work on the school board as well.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. You know it, and many of you know Yoli from her service to this city. I just asked for an I vote, and this would be a great commissioner for this commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weisar, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and first and foremost, congratulations, Ms. Yoli Flores Aguilar, to your election to the school board. Your commitment to children, the work you've done on behalf of children is impeccable, your record is impeccable, and now that you will serve on this commission, I think you could align and connect all the dots with the county, where I know you have a strong connection, the school district and the city, to move the agenda of putting children first. And I've had the pleasure of sitting with you on the Education Coordinating Council, which works to improve student achievement for our foster and probationary youth, and the time I spent with you on that board, I saw how you're tough, you want answers, you want results, and I really appreciate that approach that you brought to that board and hopefully that committee, and hopefully you bring that here in the Commission for Children, Youth, and Families as well. Congratulations. I'm thrilled that you're willing to spend some of your time as well over here. I know the job over at the school district is challenging, and so we appreciate you loaning yourself so we could continue to build those bridges between the city and the school district. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Madam President. I stand to give a strong yes vote for our candidate, Ms. Yoli Flores Aguilar. Since 1991, I have seen her in different arenas advocating for children, and it's great to see you in this post today. I just wonder how much time you'll have, given all the demands before you at school board, now with this commission, realizing that this notion of leveraging and how we can actually create compatibility within these different jurisdictions, these bureaucracies, and having a person like you who has incredible insight should only make our system that much more effective. My office is always there to support you, and I hope that our children and our families will be able to see the results based on all your hard work. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas, followed by Ms. Hahn.
Congratulations to your election to the school board. I'm sure you don't have enough time in the day to dedicate yourself to all the things you'd like to do, but we do appreciate your volunteering for this commission. But one of the things I want the people of Los Angeles to know is a little bit more about you and how long you've been dedicated to issues involving children, that is all children. How long have you been working on those issues personally?
Since 1988.
Since 1988, since kindergarten. So the reason why I ask you that question is because you are now, your day job, we have two sort of day jobs right now. What is, what job do you have with the county or relative to the county of Los Angeles?
I currently head the LA County Children's Planning Council, which is a countywide body working to improve the lives of children and families through systems change, through community-building efforts, and through bold policies and recommendations.
Which is, has a lot to do with the commission that you're up for right now, right?
Absolutely. In fact, my collaboration already with the general manager of the Commission for Children, Youth, and Their Families has started to forge a stronger partnership, stronger relationships, greater collaboration and integration, because you know what? These are the same kids. These are our same kids, our same families, our same communities, and until we begin to leverage our resources, we will not see the results that we need for kids. And I think the opportunity is here, and I'm excited about the opportunity to bring those connections together.
So do you see this commission as a commission that's supposed to be there to just point out the obvious and just talk about the issues that we have, or is it a commission that's supposed to be a part of the city's solution orientation toward those issues?
I think it needs to be both. I think it can do that policy thinking, really pushing at the margins and pushing the envelope for a different way of thinking how we serve children and families, and at the same time, integrate that thinking across every fiber of the city, every department, every element of your work, because the work, the city works for its children and for its families. And there are ways that we can begin to shift the thinking and the culture inside of not just city government, it's the work we've been doing at county government, but how do we change the culture of our institutions to better serve children and families? And I think that's the opportunity that you have here today. It's certainly the vision of Mr. Rafael Lopez.
Are there children or are there families in the City of Los Angeles that are living in poverty?
Yes, way too many children. I would say about 80% of kids are living under the 200% federal poverty level.
Okay. Are there families that are actually struggling and actually advancing to get themselves out of poverty in the City of Los Angeles?
They are working very hard to do that. The obstacles in front of them are huge, and we have a responsibility to remove those obstacles, remove those barriers, and help lift up these families.
Okay. Are we a better city when we attend to these people's needs and assist them in bringing themselves up out of poverty?
Well, this is the future of the city. It's our future workforce, it's our future society, and it's our future democracy. If we don't invest now, what we will see, in fact, we're seeing it today. We see the results of neglect, and if we don't attend, we will see greater numbers of people who were not given the opportunity and are not able to contribute in a positive manner in their communities.
Is it good for economics, is it good for business, for us to focus on assisting these families and getting them out of poverty?
This is your future workforce. It is about the economy, it is about our business community, it is about the civil society that we live in, in Los Angeles and beyond.
So when we, when we government figure out ways in which to better utilize our dollars, to better apply ourselves to these people's situations, we're a better economic place for it?
Absolutely.
And would you say that's, with those issues that you and I have been dialoguing over the last few minutes, last minute and a half, is that in line or not in line with what this country's about?
It's in line with what this country should be about.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, this country is founded on a constitution, we have a state constitution, we have a city charter, we have all these documents describing what kind of human existence we have in this country, what kind of expectations we have in this country, what kind of people we are as a country, what kind of place we are as a city, as a county, as a state of this union. What I'm asking you is, what you and I have been dialoguing the last two minutes about families and assisting them to get out of poverty, is that in line with all of those documents that we have written on walls and in books and that we attest to when we get sworn into office?
It is all about that alignment, and, but the question is, are we willing to do what it takes to be further in alignment with those values, and I think we have more work to do together.
Good, thank you. The reason why I ask you those questions is because I know you, and I know you're gonna bring us in better alignment, and I wanna thank you once again for your precious time that you're dedicating to the people of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. I love what you said, Yoli, about the stars are aligned at a time when we can really begin, really having a coordinated strategy, particularly between the City of Los Angeles and the school district. And I said that in my remarks when I helped to swear in Dick Vladovic. I said, you know, it's, the time is over for the city council when asked about issues involving the schools to say, that's the school district, and it's, the time is over for the school district to be saying, that's the city's problem.
That's right.
They are our children, and they are all of our children and families, and it's time we really work together, pooled our resources, and really made a difference. Here's what I'm really concerned about, and I think the commission could take a more visible role in this, and I think the school district could take a more visible role in this, and that's the problem of gangs, and that's the problem of our kids being afraid to walk to school. I have some very difficult areas in my council district, particularly around Markham, around Jordan, where literally our kids are afraid to walk to school. There are actually incidents of violence. Some of these kids are still getting beaten up walking to and from school. Safe Passage is one program out there that helps to get our kids to and from school. Funding is always an issue. School district has not really, I think, lived up to their challenge to help fund that. We in the city regularly try to find money in our city budget to help fund that, but I really would love for the commission to really focus on this issue of just basic safety for our kids to and from school. They need to be in school, as you know. They need to be given an education, and, you know, that's a prime target when they're not in school, for them to be recruited to join a gang. So I just really feel like, again, for every person we're arresting as a known gang member, our kids are being recruited to and from school, they're being recruited when they're dropping out of school to join a gang. So I would love for the commission to really, I don't know, study this, take a look at this, and maybe you're the one to really figure out how to make, you know, make that a real focus and help us figure out how to get funding in place so that every year when school starts, we're not scrambling to try to be able to fund programs like Safe Passage.
Absolutely.
But I would love to take, I would love for the commission to be a little more front and center on the problem of gang violence, as it affects our children and our families.
Well, I'm happy to make that a priority. It was and has been a priority for me during the campaign and now as a school board member. And, you know, that issue's a very personal issue for me. I remember growing up, it was not in the City of Los Angeles, being in junior high and high school, and my sister could not walk to school by herself because there were girls who wanted to beat her up. And it was a very terrifying experience for her and really diminished her ability to do well in school. So I remember that, and I remember that there were very few resources, except for some neighbors who were willing to, when my parents were working, to walk them to school or to be the watch out and lookout for communities. And I think we need to engage community at a deeper level, because the crime and violence is not a one-solution approach, and there is no magic bullet. It requires schools, cities, law enforcement, but it also requires communities to partner, us to be willing to partner with them to solve this very intractable problem. But I think that we can be innovative and creative, use our resources better, leverage, and insist that our kids do need more resources in order for them to do well, not just in school, but in life.
Good. Well, I'm, I'm your partner in this. This is something I'm very interested in, and I think you will serve this commission well, and I think this commission, as well as our Commission on the Status of Women, should really begin focusing on this issue, particularly for our young girls, who there's a, there's a very disturbing trend of them actually now being recruited to be gang members. And I think nothing, again, threatens the wholeness and healthiness and happiness of our children and our families than this problem of gang violence in the City of Los Angeles.
Well, and until we find positive alternatives for these kids, what else is there for them?
Exactly.
And we really need to step up and find better and more inspiring alternatives for kids.
Good. I would love for that to be the focus of this commission this year.
Right, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Alakhan, followed by Mr. Rosendahl.
Hi, Yoli.
Hi.
Well, certainly it's a pleasure to stand up and support your participation in our Child, Youth, and Family Commission. I can't think of anybody who has higher credentials in that regard, and having worked with you on a lot of different levels over the years, I'm very pleased to see you on the school board as well as in the commission. But frankly, I believe the school district has lost its, its, its basic function to socialize our kids to do the right thing. And I'm also concerned that in this huge megalopolous school district, that we are not creating opportunities for communities to develop individual cultural identity and develop in their own way. There's no way the kids in Chatsworth should be locked into a peanut butter approach to education the same as the kids in Boyle Heights. And so I would like to see the school district do a lot more with regard to centralizing the central functions for creating economies of scale, like purchasing books or something, but allowing the community to decide what their curriculum is going to be. And if they wanna buy into the books at the central depository, fine. But until we do that, I believe we're gonna have a constant problem with communities feeling left out of the equation. Now, you're in an awkward position, because as a school board member, the history of the school board has been that once they get into office, they always wanna centralize everything so it'll be under their control. And I'm asking that the school district allow local communities much more power so that we don't have to talk about redistricting and cutting the district in parcels, but in fact, we are empowering the community to take more charge of their curriculum and having greater impact in terms of socializing our kids to do the right thing. So I just wanted to make that comment, and I would like to have your response, and I'll leave it at that. You have my support, and I hope that you will allow us, my staff and I, to work with you and your staff as the chair of the Education Neighborhood Council Committee to have consistent dialogue. Your place on this commission is absolutely of value to the city.
Well, I would look, we'll look forward to that, and I think those of you who know me know that I have a tremendous commitment for bottom-up approaches. And I do believe in engaging and building the capacity of people in their community to act on their own behalf, to be involved in decision-making, whether it's curriculum or whether it's after-school programs or whether it's a design of a school. These are their schools, these are their kids, and we ought not to determine for people what we think is right for them. They have to be part of this process, and again, you know, I honor that what we make available, whether it's schools and school activities or city-funded programs and activities, there is a very important role that we have over time diminished for communities, and that's their role to be part of the decision-makers. They ought to have equal power, equal decision-making.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Good morning. It's been a very good discussion, and I've enjoyed everything that you've said about everything. I just wanna reemphasize a couple of quick things. Augustine Contreras was a young man, just turned 17, gunned down in the Venice parking lot, you know, and hugging his mother, I'll never forget for the rest of my life, the violence that goes on in our school system. Mark Twain Middle School in my district is where the young kids start creating their relationship in gangs, and then they go to Venice High School just down the street, and by that point, they're already separated out. You're black, you're here, you're brown, you're there, you're white, you're there, and there's this constant conflict. I went there once when I was just an average citizen, and wanted to see that the school stayed open after 2 o'clock to have activities, including a skateboard park. I mean, these kids are running around, and we don't have enough skateboard parks in our city. That should be a priority for everybody. I'm in the process of putting three skateboards parks together in my district. But I do walk around with this cup all the time, which is Father Greg Boyle. It's jobs, it's-- It's jobs, it's after-school programs. I think Ms. Hahn's ballot initiative that's going to come out, a parcel tax, is absolutely right on, dedicated money to give us after-school programs so the kids get that quality of life, rather than having to join a gang and find out as their quality of life. So just another energy I want to give to you on that is, how do we keep the schools open, and how do we get these kinds of programs like skateboard parks going? How do we tie it into our park system, the city wrecking park system? Because we're all connected. I'd just like your thoughts.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So tell me about what you think we can accomplish.
Well, I am almost certain that you all have heard from David Abel, who described schools being centers of communities, and I've been a partner with him in that vision and really moving that agenda forward. And, you know, every time we see another bond for schools, it drives me absolutely crazy that we're thinking about schools in still very narrow ways. We're not thinking about schools for the future.
Right.
And the future of schools have to be that they become the hubs for families, for kids, beyond two, three, four. I look at midnight basketball in New York, I look at models across the country, and we don't do that because we tend to get very parochial, with that's your job and that's my job, these are our resources, you have to pay for this. And at the end of the day, these are all the same kids.
Right.
And look at just what happened with the swimming pool.
Yeah.
And Miguel Contreras.
Yeah.
These are all the same kids.
Which, by the way, they should have found a lifeguard to there instead of busing these kids to some other pool. It's absurd.
So, you know.
Better than nothing, but still.
What I, what I'm experiencing here is that there is a tremendous passion for these issues. I think there's great opportunity for us to work well together across these jurisdictions. I know we've been polarized. I do not subscribe to polarization, because it does kids no good.
I know.
So my, my goal, my intention is to help us come together and resolve some of these tough issues, because that's what kids expect of us, and we better deliver.
That's right. Bless you for stepping up to the plate, and let us know how we can help.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much. I was good-spirited a little time there, so appreciate that, and you got the input from everybody. The only one thing I just wanted to clarify on the pool issue, because we all looked into it, it's an Olympic pool with a very deep competitive pool, and it would be unsafe for children. So our design should start off together, and that was the problem there. So what the mayor is trying to do, and others, is to give these children other opportunities, such as Griffin Park, which has shallow ends, so there's a safety factor there. And also, you have to take, state law requires you have to take a shower before you go into a public pool, and the showers weren't separated. That clarification being said, one thing I'd just love you to look at, among the thousand things, is starting school later. I worked the valet line at Ivanhoe School, and sometimes kids are coming to sleep, just rolling out of the car. Maybe if it was a little later than the 8:00 start, I know some schools start at 7:30, and run it a little longer in the day, it would be better for the children. But if you could just look at that, you could analyze it, and we'll talk about it. Thank you, Madam President. Members, I ask for an aye vote in this fine nominee for the Commission on Children, Youth and Family.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. It's hard to do this from the chair, but I want to add as well, appreciate you and I've had an opportunity to work for, together for probably close to 20 years, as you were part of the city family, as well as previously to, in the county, as we worked together on some projects. I think the linkage between the school district and our children, youth and families is so critical, and having you serve on that board, and the importance of coordination through some of the programs that are now under the purview of children, youth and families that support the schools and look at some of the truancy issues. And I think it's a critical time within the Children, Youth and Families Commission, and their ability to not just create studies, but actually action and move those things into the next level. And so I appreciate your willingness to do this, as well as be a Los Angeles Unified School Board Member. So congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Item's been approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item 17, called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Miss, I think, Ms. Hahn, if you're okay, is yours quick? Ms. Perry wanted to, she had several people here today, we were going to try to take 21 out of order.
Okay. Yeah.
So take 17?
Mine's, mine's quick. Actually, I just wanted to highlight this. I know there's somebody here from the Harvard Department, which you don't really need to come up. I, colleagues, I just think it's important that we realize that there was a stipulated judgment in, what year, 2002? 2003? That was between the Port of Los Angeles and a, actually, a homeowners group that sued the port and was not going to allow them to go forward with building the China Shipping Terminal. And the settlement agreement allowed the port to move forward with building the China Shipping Terminal, but in return, the port was to pay $50 million back to the communities for air quality mitigation, aesthetic mitigation. And I think it's important that we're highlighting that we've got about five contracts before us today, where this will be some of the money from that settlement to work on the air quality mitigation incentive program. We're going to be retrofitting cargo handling equipment, we're going to be repowering four engines of the Catalina Channel Express, so that they're low emission engines. We're going to retrofit an engine on a commercial fishing vessel called the Frog. We're retrofitting two engines on existing tug boats, and we're also retrofitting two engines on a chartered dive boat, the Sea Ray. So this is about $1.8 million. The only reason I'm bringing this up, and I'll be quick, Ms. Perry, is that, you know, 2003 was a long time ago, and I want us as a city council to really hold the Harvard Department accountable for moving this money forward. To date, we've spent very little of the $23 million that was for community aesthetic mitigation. $13 million was supposed to be spent in San Pedro, $10 million in Wilmington. That money has not been spent, and I think it's just, it's a, it's unfortunate, and I don't want the Harvard Department to get away with not spending this money. The community allowed them to move forward with building China Shipping Terminal in return for money being spent on these kind of mitigation projects. So these are good, but to date, we have not spent the money that I think the community deserves. They've got to clean up the air, they've got to mitigate aesthetically what the impacts of the port have meant to Wilmington and San Pedro. So, colleagues, I just want your support in continuing to holding the Harvard Department accountable for spending this money, which they owe to the community to clean up the air, the water, and the land. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn, and for your leadership on this issue. They're lucky to have you in the harbor area to represent you. Seeing that item is now before us, Madam Clerk, if we could, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
That item has been approved. I think we'll go to Ms. Perry's item, item 21. Ms. Perry, we do have public speaker cards.
If you would, Madam Chair, 10 and 10 on each side, and then I'll speak after that.
Bear with me, because I have, they're not separated into those. I'll go first with Noel Weiss, followed by Linda Valverde, followed by Alvinon Hurd.
Are we ready to go? Councilmembers, this is another one of those who gets what and why, what are we doing and why issues. Benjamin Franklin said, define democracy as two wolves and one lamb voting over what's for dinner. However, he also defined liberty as a well-armed lamb. Now, the tenants in this proposal need arm, they need to be armed, because they're exposed. This is another instance where we're putting speculation and profits before the tenants. You have a situation now where you're going to pass this ordinance, they're going to get their 250 square foot right to build condos. Meanwhile, what's going to happen to the tenants? This is another situation where the council acts without taking into account the, any kind of housing policy. You don't know what you're, where this is going to go relative to the tenants. And what's going to end up is, the tenants basically are going to be in a situation just like what we got, the middle class getting reamed, being thrown out, and the net result is going to be that there's basically no protection. I think Ms. Perry should amend her motion to allow for an appropriate protocol to protect the tenants going in, so that we can do this ASAP, because this has been pending now for, what, a year and a half? If they can do this, they can also do that. Thank you, Ms. Gruehl. Thank you, Council.
Linda Valverde, again, followed by Alvinon Hurd, followed by Barbara Schultz, and then Deborah Burton.
Hi, good morning. My name is Linda Valverde. I have lived and worked in the downtown area for five years now. I work with the Los Angeles Community Action Network. I recently had to leave the downtown area because I cannot afford to live downtown. When I walk through the streets and see all the empty buildings that are being converted and demolished, I think to myself, you know, will I be one of those 5% that the ordinance wants to allocate for low-income housing? Because I would like to live there, as many others in this room also. I have to commute to work now, and we all know how much a bus ride costs. So for me, you know, I would love to live downtown, I would love to be a part of the working-class people that live and work in downtown. I work very hard at my job, I work very hard in the community, for the community, but I think one of my biggest jobs is trying to not be homeless. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, 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 good morning, good morning. May I have your attention? I know you're very busy, but I'm standing here to talk about an important issue, and I'd like your attention. I know it's going to be passed, you know you're going to vote for it. The only thing I don't like, all we're going to get is 3% for the low and very low moderate income people. I don't know when you guys are going to get it together and pass the inclusionary. What do you think? We're not good enough to live downtown? Here goes another one, satisfying the developers, giving them anything that they want. They're going to give us 3% of whatever they decide to build. And of course, you know, it's not mandatory, it's volunteer. So you know their position, you know what they're going to do. When are you all going to get tired and represent the people who helped elect you? When are you going to give us our rights and let us live downtown if this is where we want to live? When are you going to pass the inclusionary? Are you afraid? You ought to check yourself. Because here we go again, you know and I know you're going to vote for it. May God bless and keep you. I hope you're conscious against the work on you, and that you will pass. One day, the inclusionary is going to pass. So me, if I want to, I can live downtown.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Barbara Schultz, followed by Deborah Burton, and then Joseph Thomas.
Barbara Schultz, Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles. Councilmen and women, what's the plan? What's the plan for building the affordable housing you all know we desperately need? What is the point of engaging in a planning process, such as the housing element, when we continue to allow any real opportunity to fund affordable housing pass us by? Market-rate housing is like Kevin Costner's baseball field. Allow them to build it, and they will come. They don't need you. We need you, and we need you to engage in real planning, real planning that will allow, it wouldn't be difficult here to build in affordable housing incentives. You've got a blue plan right here. So please, don't let another opportunity pass you by. Please amend this to allow for better affordable housing incentives. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah, followed by Joseph Thomas, followed by Esther Alejandro.
My name is Deborah Burton, and I also live and work in the downtown community. Many, I've lived in the downtown community for many years. I've seen development from the start to the finish. I see the big sign go up, lofts, condos. You walk in, you say, well, do you have any affordable units that I could rent or buy? They say, no. And if we do have it, the waiting list is like years and years away before I can move into there. You say that we don't want housing, but I'm kind of like with Barbara, if you build it, we will come. We need a true, real, affordable plan for the city of Los Angeles. People who live on a fixed income, who earn minimum wage, we need a real, affordable plan for the downtown residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Thomas, followed by Esther Alejandro.
Good morning. My name is Joseph Thomas with the Los Angeles Community Action Network, and I'm here to just give you an incentive on thinking about what you're doing, because like myself and like a lot of friends of mine, every day for years, we've been seeing this go up, we've been seeing this go under our noses about, you know, the lofts, the big buildings, all this, and you don't want to give an incentive for affordable housing. But at the same time, before we sit up here and we stand up here as a community, and you bring in a new regime of villagose village, let me tell you one thing, as a community, I don't care what you think, how you do it, you can let it go through, because I know you're going to pass it. But at the same time, it is not going to happen, people. I don't care how you do it, but we will stop it. Now, check that out and sleep on that.
Esther Alejandro, followed by Beth Dekler.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Esther Alejandro, and I have lived in the Skid Row area for the last 10 years. Now, what I would like to address is the fact that these seven incentives are being offered to developers. And one of the things that concerns me is that there is only 5% of the, of these units given for affordable housing. And what we see there is that right now, lofts are costing about $1,200 to $1,300 a month. Now, affordable housing would mean that a person would be paying something like $800 a month. That, for any resident of the Skid Row area, is onerous. It's already beyond affordable. So thank you for considering this.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Beth Dekler. I work for Livable Places, a nonprofit housing developer. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'd like to start by saying, we agree with Jan Perry. In her response to the LA Times, it was, the headline was, "We Need Dense Affordable Housing Downtown." That's a great idea. It is a transit center, a job center, and a mixed-income community, but this package will not get us any affordable housing. Developers do not need to use the FAR bonus section of this package, because they can use T-FAR. So we have had since 2000, 95% of the new housing has been market rate, which equals luxury, which equals completely out-of-reach to working people downtown and to homeless people downtown. So now, you're going to vote on an incentive to build more luxury housing when you have no plan for affordable housing downtown? You're getting ready to do a community plan update for downtown? Just one last thing, I'd just like to show you my shirt. It's the $100 Million Housing Trust Fund. I got this shirt in 2001. Okay? We still don't have $100 Million Year Housing Trust Fund. Now's the time.
Thank you. Thelma Perez?
Thelma Perez, Strategic Actions for a Just Economy. I'm here today on behalf of the members of Sage, who are working-class people who live and work in downtown Siguera corridor. These people have been displaced on an unprecedented level because of the incentives that have been given to developers to build luxury housing in downtown. Like to reiterate what Beth said, 95% of the units that have been built downtown have been luxury units, and we need affordable units. So I'm here to ask you to consider the majority of LA's population, that's the same as the population of working-class people, that keeps downtown thriving when you consider, when you vote, I'm sorry, on the Development Standards Proposal, which would, which would give another windfall to developers to continue building more of the same luxury housing. I'd like to give you an alternative, why not give incentives to build affordable housing downtown? It's what we need, we want to see. Mixed-income people downtown, the city is for all of us, not just for the rich. Thank you.
Thank you. Spartacus Kikeo and Yvonne Michelle Autry will be our last two. We're a little bit over, but just since there's two, if that's okay with Ms. Perry, we'll go to... go to it.
Hi, my name is Spartacus Kakeo. I'm here representing Coalition LA and the people of 10th District. You know, I'm deeply saddened when I come in here to City Hall and I walk across that seal in the rotunda of a Spanish galleon, and it just reiterates what's going on here. And, you know, the fact that there is no plan for affordable housing in the city, and then you guys are about to pass this, or want to, you know, and just the fact that it's up here, you know, as an item, is ridiculous. There's not enough affordable housing. You know, the rhetoric was real great earlier about how we care about our children, and you know, we're, we want, you know, them to, not to be terrorized when they're walking to school. What about being terrorized when they can't live at home, or they have to move out because the rent is too high, or because they can't find a home? You know, what about that? Okay? So, we're asking you to really think about it and vote no on this, and, you know, adjust it so that, you know, people have, so you guys actually represent, you know, everybody, not just the wealthy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Yvonne Michelle Autry. I hope that you would pay attention to us. Most of you seem like you're concerned with other things, and I think we need more than one minute each because this is a vital issue that will determine the future of our, of our status, of our residential status. Again, what I said earlier was that what was once ugly and undesirable has now become most viable and most desirable because of the money being invested. And I think it's horrible that you have actually no sense of, like, this justice here to preserve the affordable housing for the people who have lived here for 10, 20, 30, 40 years. It has always been available, and it should always be available to people that need it. I would propose, in support of Mr. Weiss here, that we are able to purchase buildings, or that we could petition successfully for the city to purchase buildings specifically for low-income people, senior citizens, disabled people, and people that need it. I think it's a horrible travesty. Again, this is a democracy, not an aristocracy, and not an oligarchy. We deserve residential housing just as well as any other class, and we will fight for it. I don't know how you sleep at night, frankly.
Thank you very much. We now, we'll have 10 minutes on those for the proposal. Sister Diane Donahue, Vanessa Rodriguez, Shiraz Tarji. Sister Diane, yours had "For the Proposal" on it. Okay.
Thank you. My name is Sister Diane Donahue. I am the founder of Esperanza Community Housing. I was on the Blue Ribbon Committee on Slum Housing and the Housing Crisis Task Force. So we've had this problem of affordable housing and the concern for it for a long time. We did an op-ed piece, Doug Ring and I, and maybe you saw it, but there's copies of it here for you. Down-to-earth housing is the name of it, and that's what we're really talking about. We're talking about the future of downtown and not just some technical cleanup to make processing easier by the Planning Department. We want to make sure that the people who live downtown, who work downtown, who are middle-class, working people, have a place to live. And so, if you look at, you know, you passed the BID today. Okay, pardon me, who's that? That was the BID.
You have, yeah, you have a one minute, so.
All right, I'll go fast. They make $12,000 a year, and they can afford $300 a month to live. I mean, you've got the BID going, you've got people here, where do they have to live? We've got a new Ralph's grocery store. Where do those folks get to live? What I'm talking about, basically, is how we're going to make luxury housing and affordable housing and transition housing happen in this city. And I ask you if you will please go and take this package, send it back to the Planning Department with instructions to put together a complete plan that does the work for all of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Sister Diane. We'll now go start the 10 minutes for Vanessa Rodriguez, followed by Shiraz Tarji, Darren Hanson, followed by Paul Rohr.
Good morning, Vanessa Rodriguez, Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce in support of the ordinance. We believe the downtown housing ordinance will revise the city's planning standards to encourage high-density developments. It will establish comprehensive design standards for downtown Los Angeles. Furthermore, the ordinance creates incentives for affordable and workforce housing, which will result in the construction of more high-rise, affordable, and workable units. More attractive incentives will entice development in Los Angeles and help solve the affordable housing crisis. The chamber urges you to support the downtown housing ordinance as it represents an important step in the urban renewal of Los Angeles and the economic vitality of the region. Thank you.
Thank you. Shiraz.
Good morning. I'm Shiraz Tangri. I'm the Planning Co-Chair for the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council. The Neighborhood Council has not had a chance to take a formal vote with respect to the proposals, but the Planning Committee voted in support, and I'm going to read from you quickly the letter in support, which will be approved next week. The Neighborhood Council supports the policies behind the downtown housing ordinance. Number one, encouraging development of affordable housing. Two, increasing housing production at all income levels. Number three, streamlining the entitlement process. And four, establishing urban design standards for downtown Los Angeles. We believe the downtown housing ordinance will facilitate the ongoing revitalization of downtown by creating planning standards appropriate for an urban, high-density, and transit-oriented metropolitan center. The housing ordinance will help achieve four important goals: updating development standards for the urban core, implementing the TFR ordinance, establishing comprehensive downtown design standards, and incentivizing affordable housing construction. The Neighborhood Council urges the City Council to vote in favor without further delay. Thank you.
Thank you. Darren Hanson, followed by Paul Rohr, followed by Carol Schatz.
Madam President, Councilmembers and city staff, my name is Darren Hanson with AmCal. We're one of the largest affordable housing providers in the city of Los Angeles and the state of California. As an affordable housing provider, we support the housing ordinance. It actually helps streamline the planning process by codifying existing planning tools for the greater downtown incentive area. It creates a clear path for housing providers, encouraging the creation of much-needed housing throughout the area. Additionally, we're pleased to note that, under the direction of Councilwoman Jan Perry, the City Council, excuse me, City Planning extended the Greater Downtown Housing Incentive Area to the south of Santa Monica Freeway as developers who understand the potential this region holds, the majority transportation corridors that connect the downtown to the southern portion are ideal locations for the development of more workforce housing. The downtown housing ordinance is an important tool that will encourage the support of development for housing. This reason, we ask to adopt the ordinance before you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Rohr, followed by Carol Schatz, followed by Russell Brown.
Hi, my name is Paul Rohr with Mungertolz &amp; Olson, and I'm here in support of the downtown housing ordinance. Passage of the downtown housing ordinance will lead to the creation of more housing for people of all incomes. It assures uniform guidelines, provides incentives for affordable housing, helps raise public benefit payments, and stops encouraging developers to build ever-larger units. The downtown housing ordinance is an important step in creating planning rules for downtown that are consistent with an urban, rather than a suburban, environment. In April, the City Council passed the TFR ordinance, allowing the city to sell air rights. The TFR ordinance is expected to raise over $300 million in public benefit payments that can be used to provide affordable housing, homeless services, or other public benefits. However, the passage of the TFR ordinance was only a first step, and the passage of the downtown housing ordinance is a necessary second step in order to build more units of a size that all people can live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Schatz.
Carol Schatz, President of the Central City Association of Los Angeles. We thank Councilmember Perry and the Planning Department for initiating these ordinances. We thank the mayor for his support, Councilman Ed Reyes for passing this through the Plumb Committee. This is an important step in the continued revitalization of downtown. 8,000 housing units already completed, 8,000 housing units under construction, 57,000 permanent jobs created, over $30 million in taxes to the city of Los Angeles alone. This revitalization has been incredibly important for the city as a whole, and these ordinances help that revitalization continue, and increase housing stock at all income levels, streamline the entitlement process, and for once and for all, finally make an urban planning code similar to what you have in Portland, and Seattle, and New York, and Chicago. We can't build urban, we can't build high-density without these changes. We ask you to support this ordinance. Affordable housing is a city-wide issue, should not just be on the back of downtown Los Angeles.
Thank you. Russell Brown, John Whitaker, and Don Garza.
Russell Brown, Chair of Residents Association Downtown LA and the Executive Director of Historic Downtown Bid. I'm also a resident of Historic Core. We're very much in support of this ordinance. This codifies existing practice of allowing planning to make urban planning decisions on a blanket basis without having to go through case-by-case exceptions. It's compatible with the existing footprint of downtown buildings. Presently, all the new development would fit in with the historic context, and also speeds up development by creating certainty and allowing smaller, affordable units. It also creates a mechanism for affordable housing. This is not expected to be the total solution of all the housing needs of the entire city, but it is a next step, along with TFR. It partners with the developers in a productive way. The true solution of this is really a partnership with the federal government, the state, and the county. Those will also be partners that will need to be brought to the table, but this is a great first step for downtown, and I thank Jan for taking the leadership on this.
Thank you. John Whitaker, followed by Don Garza.
Thank you. Good morning. John Whitaker, Real Estate and Land Use Partner at DLA Piper. I represent a number of the developers who have, the early developers who have built the high-rise residential, such as South Group and Hanover. I've also worked with a number of the developers, working with the LA SED. The TFR ordinance, as others have mentioned, is an important first step, but it won't be used unless we have these ordinances in place. So to answer one of the other comments, developers are going to have a choice now to build by right in a low density, but now they're incentivized under this ordinance to either use TFR and pay hundreds of millions of dollars collectively, or substantial amount for each project, which can then be used for affordable housing, or they have to build the affordable housing on-site. It's an either-or. Either way, we're going to have money for affordable housing. My concern is if you don't pass it, we're going to be, we're not going to have any more building other than the six-to-one by right, and I don't think anybody wins with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Don Garza.
It's about time. Downtown Los Angeles should have been densified residential a long time ago. I don't know why people put it off. I don't know why places like Echo Park and Silver Lake and other places were, which were the suburbs, the closest suburbs of downtown, were gentrified. I mean, I'm pretty sure they fought, but they, downtown has been a smokescreen for such a long time. People claim that this is, you know, this is supposed to be the domain of the poor, and it's, this is supposed to be the domain of everyone. This ordinance is going to create housing, it's going to create a supply. This is what is important, this is what is needed. The kinks will get worked out, and I'm grateful that somebody is stepping up to the plate with leadership to bring this forth, even though there might be some opposition. We need housing at all income levels, and I know, living in Skid Row, that this is going to bring money to those developers that continue to build more affordable housing. Just like I saw this morning at the county building with SRO receiving over $1,900, I mean, $1,900,000 to build the James Wood, and there's more housing in the pipeline, and that's why this TFR is very important. Whether they build it on-site or off-site, the fact of the matter is, it's going to get built.
Thank you very much. That closes public comment. We have Ms. Perry and Mr. Reyes on the queue.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Approximately two years ago, I was approached by the Department of City Planning to support a set of ordinances that would update the zoning code to accommodate high-rise construction in downtown Los Angeles. Currently, developers building this type of housing in downtown LA apply for variances to allow zero setback, elimination of open space requirements that are consistent with high-rise construction. The city has granted these variances in every case and will continue to do so because it's good planning. With that in mind, this ordinance before you today establishes two goals, or accomplishes two goals. It updates planning standards to an urban model for high-density, high-rise buildings in downtown. Second, it provides a floor area bonus of 35% if, and only if, a development includes a percentage of affordable housing. The ordinance proposes to utilize a total building envelope as the regulation for the size of buildings, and to let the market determine the size of the units that will fit within it. Downtown LA is the region's largest employment center, it has the most extensive transit network in the region, and as more amenities come online, residents in downtown will be able to satisfy many needs within a few blocks of their homes. These urban planning guidelines will allow the market to determine the size of the units, which should include smaller, more affordable living spaces. This ordinance serves as another means by which we can create more housing options at all income levels for young people, for seniors, for working people, and for those who want to choose a different style of life as our city evolves over the next 50 years. I also ask the City Planning Department to reconsider the ordinance by expanding the boundary of downtown to Martin Luther King Boulevard, and looking at the expansion area as an opportunity to increase the density along the major transportation corridors like Washington Boulevard, Grand Avenue, Figueroa, and Flower, while making sure to protect the integrity of the R1, single-family neighborhoods which make up the heart and soul of South Los Angeles. I did this with the understanding that it is important to create a jobs-housing balance. We need family housing in the area of the city where we are pouring millions of dollars into park improvements, building new schools, and we need to continue to seek and find affordable housing development opportunities. There is a desire to develop market-rate housing in downtown, but there is also an extreme demand for affordable housing in downtown at the lowest end of the economic spectrum for people living on fixed incomes. This is housing that can only be built with significant government subsidy. It is housing for persons with disabilities, supportive housing for the chronically homeless veterans and working poor, and I think the numbers of units that have come online for permanent supportive housing in Central City East and downtown in general speak for themselves. Downtown has responded to the need by building more than 5,000 units of permanent supportive housing, with nearly 1,000 more units in the pipeline now in downtown. We have an interim control ordinance in place to prevent the loss of very-low-income housing in the residential hotels, not just in downtown, but throughout the city of Los Angeles. The proposed downtown ordinance is one of many planning tools used now to address high-density and affordable housing development. This includes an affordable housing component when the developer uses the floor area density bonus. The need is great all over the city. Downtown cannot satisfy the entire need of the region in the affordable housing, and while that's not on the table today, we need to continue to discuss how we, as a city, will create more affordable housing. So again, we are codifying the necessary planning tools to develop high-rise residential buildings in the downtown and greater downtown incentive housing area, and providing an important incentive to build mixed-income and affordable housing in this downtown, growing by leaps and bounds, community, and I ask that you support this ordinance with a yes vote, with the amendments. And I also, for my colleagues, have given everyone a letter explaining my position, detailing some of the finer aspects of this, and if you have any questions, Jane Blumenfeld from the Department of Planning is here and is here to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I rise to one, come to grips with the reality that eventually this city, this council has to address the bigger picture of how we allow people who live in the city to continue living in it, and folks who work in our city to even afford to live in it. So with that intention, I'd like to do a friendly amendment that we essentially request that the Planning Department put together a tracking system in how this program works, looking at how the incentive is actually creating affordable units. And that... looking at how the incentive is actually creating affordable units, and that in 18 months, we have a report that gives us some clarity as to what this ordinance actually does for the folks at the lower end of the economic spectrum. It is, I believe, a monitoring system that we need in order for us to understand what works and what doesn't. Two or three years ago, we had that discussion about inclusionary zoning, and we could not move it because of all the controversy, misinformation that was out there, but I think we learned a lot from that process, and I faith this body will address that bigger issue eventually. I'm hoping the mayor's office with the council can come to grips with the need of addressing that very complicated issue, but for now, let's learn based on the results of this type of language, this ordinance, and see how we can gather and harness the resources from the private sector, from the public sector, from the welfare of our city. On occasion, colleagues, I've had community meetings, I've had town hall meetings, and we talk about the great achievements, the brand-new schools, renovated parks, brand-new libraries, and it is common for folks in the audience to tell me, "That's all great, Congressman, but for whom are you building this for? I now have to leave. I've just been pushed out of my apartment. My cousin, my aunt, my grandmother now has to live out in the outskirts of San Bernardino because that's the only place we can afford to live." I'm getting reports from folks in neighborhood that the classrooms are not filling up anymore. The kids we were building for can no longer live in our city, so we have to come to grips with this challenge, and I'm hoping that this particular ordinance will give us some insight as to how the real estate industry, those who finance and benefit from these types of businesses can actually come to grips with the fact that we should be building for everyone in the city. Thank you.
Ms. Perry seconds that. Mr. Weisar, followed by Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Before I begin my comments, I just want to clarify, the amendment is precisely to do what, Mr. Reyes?
The planning department to track every case that comes under this ordinance, to see how much has been built on the affordable side and to see how this is impacting our urban scape in promoting these housing facilities.
Thank you very much. And I would also suggest that we perhaps in one year get a report. We request that now so that at least there is some time that we know they're going to come back to us to summarize the tracking and as for, to get the result, maybe we could get, go to plum in one year if I could make an amendment to your amendment, if that's okay. Give some timeline to this.
I'm fine with that. Again, it's just the issue of how we learn from this and that will facilitate that, I believe.
Thank you very much. And clerk, I think for the record, that was an accepted amendment to his amendment for one year. Thank you very much. If I could ask the planning department to come up, please. I just wanted to clarify, I have an understanding of when the, if someone takes advantage of this bonus and the 35% FAR bonus, the set aside for affordable, if they take advantage of this, then they will have, they must set aside 5% for very low-income tenants, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And one of the following, 15% for moderate-income tenants or 20% for workforce. Is that correct?
Close.
No?
They have to set aside 5% of the units for very low and then one of either 10% for low income, 15% for moderate, or 20% for workforce. So it's a minimum of 15 and 20, between 15 and 25% of the units.
And how do we know that's enough? I mean, we get the sense and we know we want more affordable units. The response I got from planning is that while we add more or require more, people or developers would not want to take advantage of the incentive. How do we know that's enough?
Well, I think the answer is it's never enough. I mean, it's never enough. You could have 100% of them, it wouldn't be enough. What we're trying to do here from a legislative point of view is create an incentive system that will be, the incentives will be so great that people will opt to do the incentive package over what they could otherwise do. So the difference between having something that's mandatory, that everybody has to do in order to build, and having an incentive package is, the trick is to find incentives that are great enough to get what it is you want. And so, is it enough? Absolutely not. But will it be enough to get people to opt for the incentive so that we get some affordable housing? Because we are getting zero now, zero. So...
And we ran some pro formas on that. Who did these pro formas?
The Housing Department, the CRA, and planning worked on this together, did all the pro formas, many, many, many pro formas, and the combination of affordable housing that's in the ordinance, as you have it before you today, is a result of doing dozens of combinations of affordability levels and what worked the best. That's what worked the best.
What does work the best mean?
Work the best means something that would be an incentive that was greater than the otherwise, the market option that they would otherwise have.
Okay. And what do you think we're going to get, see in 12 months, I mean, a year, yeah, 12 months, in a year when we come back? What, what do you say? Because, and here we're doing some pro formas based upon what we think we're going to get. Well, we should think about what we may be able to see what the world's going to look like here in a year. What do you think that world is going to look like?
Well, there's so many variables that are out of, all of our control that evolve daily. I mean, interest rates are a big part of what people can and can't do, and none of us here have much control over that or even foresight to know in 12 months what they're going to be like. So hopefully, the combination of incentives that are in this ordinance will outlive the market cycles and we'll see affordable housing, we'll see people opt for the incentive package. We've had calls and interest expressed in doing it.
The interest is, we've heard some of that here today as well. So you suspect that they like what they see and that there is going to be, people are going to take advantage of this and provide the affordable units we need?
That's our hope.
Okay, but you don't know how many? You can't guess now? You can't?
No, I think even just without, just the market itself, whether, and the absorption rate and the pace of development, all of those are factors that I think dictate what people will and won't invest in in the downtown in general.
Okay, one final question. The elimination between, the distinction between private and common open space, why was that done? Why are we doing that?
In the downtown, in high-rise buildings, there, people live in downtown, high-rise, dense urban buildings for a different reason than you live in a building in Chatsworth or Northridge or more suburban locations. And when people are opting for the downtown and that kind of living where the Staples is there, LA Live is there, museums are there, and all that kind of urban living, frequently people want different kinds of open space in their units. And for those who have seen the Park 5th presentation, which is a new project proposed on Pershing Square, they, one of the really appealing things of their project is these huge, maybe they're 10 feet deep, I don't know, balconies that are outside, and they have units that are not the size of homes in Northridge, but this kind of outdoor living space. You can't do that under ordinance. So this gives people flexibility that if the tenants inside their building, they believe want a pool or a fitness room or a giant lobby, they can do that, but if they want big usable balconies where they can eat dinner out there, then they can do that. So it provides flexibility and it has nothing to do with the public realm, this is all about the space for the tenants.
What about the concern that this will reduce the livability of...
I think it enhances the livability, not reduces the livability. Enhances the livability.
Also.
But just what I said, if the Park 5th project couldn't produce big balconies to enhance your unit, I think it would be an inferior space. And I don't think, it's been the experience of many downtown developers, that a big lobby is not an appeal, appealing thing. There's not room for courtyards in the middle of high-rise buildings like there are in more suburban locations, so it's just a different kind of development.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. I think, you know, we're trying to strike a balance between providing affordable units and also getting creative and not having to abide by stringent guidelines. One size does not fit all, and I applaud the planning department for thinking creatively here. We've got to do more of that, and so, thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal, followed by Mr. Labonge, Alakon and Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon.
Hello.
Again, give me, give me the incentive percentages and all of that.
The incentive?
The 5%.
Uh-huh.
Take us through those numbers again.
If you opt for the floor area bonus, you have to set aside 5% of the units for very low income and either 10% more for low income, 15% more for moderate, or 20% more for workforce. And we defined in this ordinance, workforce is 150% of median.
You know, we all have this problem of people living where they work. My district is totally gridlocked because our affordable housing every day shrinks, 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 is the condo conversion business, and people can't afford to live in the 11th district. I'm sure it's an issue for every part of the city. How comfortable are you in this initial discussion of this, that developers are going to step to the plate, find this exciting, and therefore it's a voluntary incentive program, correct?
Yes.
And give me your comfort level of how they're going to do the 5% or 10% or 20%? Because it's all about the developer saying in their mind, "It pencils in," correct?
Yes.
And that it works for them. Give me some hope that that makes sense from your discussions on this issue.
And it's, this ordinance is somewhat akin to the density bonus ordinance, and we've had a density bonus ordinance in the city for 10 or 15 years, even though it's changed.
Is that similar to 1818 in that sense?
Yes. And in the density bonus that we've had, we've had maybe three, over 3,000 units of affordable housing on a voluntary basis produced. So it's a good model, but it doesn't work in the downtown because of construction types and costs, it's just, it's so unique in the downtown. So I think the model has proven effective if we have good enough incentives and it's better than the market and people want to build bigger buildings, they will do it.
And of course, I agree with Mr. Reyes that we need to keep an eye on this and see how it develops. When you envision this meeting some of our affordable housing needs, how much land are we looking at? How much potential units are we looking at? And how much of those potential units could be affordable?
Well, I think it, so much depends on the market. This is, it's, this ordinance applies to the downtown, basically between the freeways and also the Figaro corridor and the Washington Boulevard corridor south of the 10 freeway. So to the extent the market lets people build buildings there, it'll continue to build buildings, and the interest rates stay in some place that people can afford to build buildings, I think that we'll get some units. Is it going to solve that affordable housing problem? Not, no.
But it's better than nothing.
But right now, we have nothing, and right now, there's no way to build affordable housing, and we're not getting any, we know that because we see. And so this is an option that at least there'll be the chance to have it. We know we have zero, and when we track it, if we find we're getting a lot or we're not getting a lot, we, the other option is we get zero, so...
So in concluding, again, give me the incentive, let's assume I'm a developer for a minute and I'm trying to sharpen my pencil and make something work for me. What will make me happy in terms of getting that percentage going? What would you give, again, to me?
You would get a lot more buildable area.
A lot more buildable area.
It's actually more like 50% more, so it's a big...
50% more density.
It's a big, yes. There is no density cap. The issue about the smaller units that you've heard about is, not that they're smaller units, but that sometimes in our zoning, you reach the density cap before you reach the floor area cap. So you could have built more building, but the density cap limits you. So this removes that, so in the event that you're building, filling up your space with a building, you can fill it up with units which were sort of, we disincentivized before. So it allows more units and the small, if there are smaller units, not that they're going to be $200 a month, but they will be less than a bigger unit. So to that extent, they'll be more affordable than the market would have provided.
And a developer is sort of in his motto can say, "The sky's the limit." I mean, they can actually go up as high as they feel they can accomplish that.
There's still a floor area ratio of 6 to 1 generally in the downtown, so there's that limit. But within that 6 to 1, which is big, and is the floor area controlling what you see in the downtown, but within that, they would be able to build more smaller units if they felt the market was there for smaller units. And that's a good thing.
What about the fear that some of the constituents have who came up and spoke? That since there's no real requirement, that they'll just not do it?
Well, there is no real requirement, and if there's no option, there's still no real requirement. So I, I agree. I mean, I agree with that. There's no real requirement. This ordinance provides an incentive to get affordable housing, and without it, there's no real requirement.
Right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Mr. City Attorney, you know how long I've worked for the city?
I believe 33 years.
33 years. So 33 years ago is what, 1976 or something like that? 1976. The reason I make that point is I always have a, and members, you know, I always have a kind of a little trait of asking people where they went to high school or where they lived. And I remember early on talking to some city employees who were then managers or assistant general managers and others, who expressed where they grew up, but where they now live. And I remember one in particular lived in Roland Heights, and I asked him, "Why do you live in Roland Heights?" And he said he couldn't afford to live in Los Angeles, and this is probably when he started with the city. I started in '76, he started in '59 or '60 or something like this. Who would know to look at this pattern historically? This pattern of movement of housing, of what has changed on that? Who would know that history, Jane? From a science, you know, would a university know this? Would a, would it be something worthy to look at? Will you trace patterns?
I think, you know, the census to some extent. When you look at the census every 10 years, you can see patterns of what happened.
Yeah, I remember talking to a great photographer, Bill Ray, of how tough Bunker Hill was before, you know, '57, '58, when then Mayor Paulson ordered it to be redevelopment and then to clear it all off in essence, and now this is what we have from that aspect. I think it's important to look at that, and I would ask on Mr. Reyes's motion on the planning department to study, I'd like the Housing Department to look at this as well and see what they could do factually on this. It is a challenge wherever we are in the world, wherever, whatever station in life that we are in, to find housing and so difficult to do that, and I think it would help us track this in a better way. And I stand to support Jan Perry and her efforts in Los Angeles to improve the quality of life and the opportunity for housing. Thank you.
Get the housing in.
Thank you. Mr. Alakon.
Hi, Jane. The idea of creating more housing opportunities in downtown is a long time coming. In fact, Jane, you and I talked about this when we worked for Mayor Bradley, and it's taken far too long for us to bring that movement to the council floor. So it's a tremendous opportunity for us to move forward in a way that provides opportunities to create housing when we have a housing shortage and transportation congestion that is off the scale. So, but I am concerned about, one of the comments that was made by one of the representatives from Acorn was that the developers are only providing 3%. I looked at a lot of materials on this subject. I didn't see anything that referenced 3% relative to affordable housing. Could you please explain to me what, first of all, whether there's any 3% requirement for affordable or moderate housing? Give us a more accurate picture. If that's not the case, what exactly the developers will be accountable for?
In the ordinance, there's an incentive package that provides various bonuses, much of which is captured in floor areas, so they get additional building size, basically, additional square feet in a building. In order to get that, they need to provide affordable housing, they need to provide...
How much?
Of the units they build, 5% of them for very low income, and then also 10% for very low income in addition to the five, or 15% for low, for moderate income, or 20% for workforce housing.
Which, workforce housing being higher than moderate?
Yes. We defined it in this ordinance as 150% of median. So moderate is 120%.
Okay, but nowhere is it 3%?
No, three.
Okay. I just wanted that to be stated on the record. I just wanted that to be stated on the record.
So it's 15, that's a minimum.
I know my colleague, Councilman Carganis, has a lot of questions about the specifics, so I'm going to defer to him, but I'll be listening to those questions and answers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Carganis.
Thank you. Now, if you could please help me understand, what this ordinance will do is eliminates or modifies various requirements on the landowners. If they want to take advantage, for example, of eliminating certain setback or density requirements and things of that nature. You were talking earlier about what the requirement would be on the subsidized housing component if they were to take advantage of some of these items in the motion. But I'm not sure what that exactly means. That means if they take advantage of one of those components, then their requirements are in full on the elements that you described earlier? Or they have to take advantage of all of these elements, and then their requirements are in full? Is it black and white? They take advantage of one of these elements, and then all of a sudden, they're committed to that housing requirement?
That's right. Yes, correct. Any of those bonus pieces, to do any of them, any or all, they'd have to set aside the affordable housing.
Okay. So for example, if a developer says, "Look, to do my project, I need to eliminate this particular setback requirement"?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
There's, there are four building standards that are proposed in the ordinance that have nothing to do with affordable housing. Four things. And that's the no setbacks, that's the cap, eliminating the density cap on the number of units, and having the flexibility to decide about the internal building, open space, whether how much is common and how much is for the individual tenants. So those three things are nothing, are not tied to affordable housing. They're just, they are the kinds of building standards that we've been telling developers, and the CRA has been telling developers, we want them to build that way. We want them to build to the property line. We don't want spaces between the buildings. And for, in order to do those things that we are telling them we want them to do, they needed to get variances. So we've said we're codifying what it is we're telling them we want them to do.
Okay. Now, what in this ordinance triggers the affordable housing element?
If they want any of the other things, that more bigger building, more floor area, the flexibility of the open space, and those are the things.
But are they already getting an advantage on density in what you earlier described?
They're getting, they're not getting more floor area. What happens is, we have in our city's codes, three constraints on buildings, unlike pretty much any city in the country. We limit the floor area, we limit the units per acre, and we limit the height, although not in the downtown. So in the downtown, we have two limitations. So sometimes people, developers, in designing a building, hit one cap before the other. And what we're saying in this ordinance is, if you build to the floor area, the maximum you're allowed to fill up on your space, that you can, if you build smaller units and you could get more...
Units.
More units in that same allowable floor area, that that's okay to do. That's what this says.
Without triggering any housing element?
Anything, right. Because otherwise, they would build the same building, and they would just stop sooner, build bigger building, build bigger units. And what we've said is in this ordinance, in our codes, we've encouraged larger units for no really good reason. We encourage larger units by having the floor area and the density cap together on one building. And that's a big problem, actually, in the West Side for Councilman Rosendale, a really big problem there. And we see very big units for that reason.
Can you give me a simple example in layperson's terms of what a developer would be getting or agree to that would trigger the affordable housing element requirement?
If they wanted to build bigger than a floor area ratio of 6 to 1, so if they could build 100,000 square feet, and they wanted to build 200,000 or 150,000, they could do that if they set aside the affordable housing. So a bigger building is what they would opt for. They also, that flexibility about the, I mean, the ability to provide, to provide less of the open space and pay an in-lu fee, that's another bonus, part of the bonus concept is. Instead of providing the required internal open space, the balconies and whatever else, they could provide half of it and pay half in cash and an in-lu fee, which would be around $9,000 per unit.
And that money would go where?
That money would go into a fund for downtown urban streetscape amenities, including maintenance, which the parks fee we, people pay, the Quimby fee cannot do.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Is the department capable, does it have the capacity to track applications that have utilized the FAR bonus that resulted in production of affordable housing?
You mean for this ordinance?
Yes.
Oh, I think we could figure out a way, yes.
So it's not available at this time? Do we have the infrastructure for it? You can put that together?
I am not a systems person, but I'm certain we could figure out a way, yeah.
Okay. When you spoke to AMIs and what that means, can you give us some dollar figures on what that actually reflects so that the council can understand who we are talking about when you speak to the AMIs? Can you give us the dollar figure?
I think the median income, so the 100 percent of median is, for a family of four, is, I believe, $54,000. So 50 percent AMI, the very low income, that we would require the 5 percent of the units before would be half of that, $27,000, $28,000.
For a family of four?
For a family of four.
So that they would have access to these facilities if they're triggered, given the percentages allowed?
Yes.
Based on what they're seeking as bonus?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. In terms of adding the Housing Department, what role would they play in the tracking process? We heard from Councilman Labonge that he wanted to add the Housing Department into the tracking process. On the surface, I know I'm asking you to shoot from the hip here, but what role would the Housing Department play in that tracking process?
I thought Councilman Labonge was asking more, a more global question about trends in housing over the decades. I didn't think he was asking about the tracking. So I don't think if he was, they would...
Maybe I have some clarity, Councilman Labonge. When you offered the Housing Department, under what capacity, what function?
Well, I think sometimes the Planning Department gets bogged down in planning. Now, you're overwhelmed by all the questions. Not enough staff can't get it done. I think you bring the Housing Department together to help focus and advocate and add to the mix. I think that's an important thing. And I think the one thing, and I saw that frown, Jane, the one thing I believe in is it's important to have integration in city departments, and I wouldn't be afraid. I would defer, if I could, to whether it's the CIO's office or whomever would want to just discuss this in some way, because I think it's important that departments absolutely work together, not in a competitive way, but in a way to help people.
So in light of that recommendation, probably going to have the CIO and the CLA together, the Housing Department and Planning.
Yeah, Jerry.
Give us, maybe in three months, what the system will look like, so that in a year and a half...
Okay.
We can get to real numbers. And that would not be surprising, a half, "Well, we thought you wanted this, and this is all we have." I want to make sure there's clarity in what the report will entail.
Yeah, just to be clear, we work with the Housing Department on all of these set-aside combination concepts, because when we require these set-asides, they, in order to build these buildings, they record a covenant with the Housing Department. And the Housing Department looks at the building plans, they record a covenant on those units, and they monitor them for the life of the covenant, which is at least 30 years. So we are working with the Housing Department on these in lockstep. We can't do them, we do them together.
Okay. So given that relationship, we can structure a report that gets to the essence of our questions.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Perry, do you want to add anything before? We have no more speakers on the queue. If not, I think, Mr. Clerk, would you like to tell us what we have before us?
Madam President, is my understanding that the last motion was accepted as friendly?
Is that correct, Ms. Perry? Ms. Perry? Was that a friendly amendment? Okay. Thank you.
That would have the CIO, CLA, Housing and Planning Department work on the tracking system.
Yes.
And have a report back in one year.
Thank you. And Mr. Reyes's earlier motion on the review that was seconded by Ms. Perry.
Correct.
So that item is now before us as amended. Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Item's been approved. Next item?
Item 19 called special by Councilwoman Alacon.
Mr. Alacon? Are you ready for item number 19? Mr. Alacon.
Yes, Members, item number 19 is an item that although I'm the chair of the committee, I hadn't seen before today, quite frankly, because it was considered in committee prior to my presence on this committee. But what it does do is, would set the opportunity in place for neighborhood councils to put their meetings on the web. And it's a simple notion, but it does have some ramifications. And the recommendation that came back from committee, under the leadership of our colleague Ms. Hahn, when she was chair of the committee, was that the, that we move forward with the project, but that the neighborhood councils bear the burden of cost of $9,000 per site, but we move forward as a pilot project, identifying three neighborhood councils that would be willing to pay that cost, as well as recommending that Bank absorb a $12,000 cost and put its meetings on the web. I believe that, there may be some questions about this, and so I think it would be fruitful for us to have a discussion about it. But I do believe that we should move forward and allow neighborhood councils the opportunity to inform the public by virtue of using the Internet to communicate with their constituents and just exhibit the meetings on the web if they choose. If we are entitled to use the resources of Channel 35 to put council meetings, it would make sense that we extend that opportunity in a way to the neighborhood council system. At the same time, I think we do have to be wary of creating a new bureaucracy, and we don't want to bog down the process with onerous responsibilities. There are questions about archiving that might come up, and I think that we need to be sensitive about our responsibilities relative to archiving. So at this time, I'm fine with the report with one exception. I would like to expand the opportunity to others who might be willing to participate, and if we have the costs covered, that we allow the department to move forward and extend the opportunity to them as well, if other monies are identified. But with that, I believe there are questions that other colleagues might have...
The only other person who is interested, has noted, is Ms. Hahn, hasn't she?
Okay. Well, I would like to hear those comments before proceeding.
Fine. Do we want to have somebody from the department come up here so we can ask some questions? Mark is here from ITA, and Bong Wong, our new assistant general manager of Department of Neighborhood Empowerment is here. Colleagues, again, this was an idea to allow our neighborhood councils to really get up to speed with what everybody else is doing these days, and that's having an opportunity to have their meetings webcast so that people could click on their Internet and see what the neighborhood council is doing. You know, one of the things we've always struggled with, with our neighborhood councils since the beginning is outreach. That is just a constant theme. Every time there's elections, every time there's a review, every time there's problems, it's always about outreach. You know, how are neighborhood councils reaching out to the wide population? Many people still say they're not really representative of the vast majority of folks who live in the neighborhood council jurisdiction. I mean, it just always seems to be a problem. This was a way, we thought, that they could do outreach, kind of beyond putting flyers on people's doors, it's kind of beyond having annual elections. It really was a way ongoing that people could, if they didn't want to come to meetings, or if they didn't, you know, really weren't sure of what the issues were, they could click onto their computer and find out what they're doing. I thought it'd be a great idea to have a pilot program. Let's just choose three neighborhood councils. Let's do it. Let's see what the problems are. Let's try it and work it out. But the neighborhood councils balked a little bit when they found out that they were going to have to pick up the cost, which, one of the things I'd like to talk about is the cost. The report kind of has some numbers, and I'm not sure those are accurate, so maybe we could at least start with what it would cost. I understand some of the neighborhood councils already have purchased cameras, some of them are already videotaping their meetings, so that's kind of the first step. So can we talk just a little bit about the equipment? What would it cost? Have we thought of any more creative ways to fund this pilot program? And I really thought, it was 2005 that we thought of this, it's 2007, can't be that complicated, can't be that difficult. It's really, to me, where all neighborhood councils should be going in the future, is this kind of ability to webcast their meetings. I threw a lot of commentary in there and a couple of questions, so see if you two can decipher that.
Mark Wolf with the Information Technology Agency. I'll address the process and technology side of the question, Councilwoman. In regards to our original report that was filed in February of 2006, since that time, we have actually negotiated a contract in place, and there's a reduced cost, a lesser cost than what we reported in our document that's before you. The per neighborhood council cost would be $9,000 for year one. And if a neighborhood council already had in its possession a camera and audio recording equipment, then that cost could be reduced by approximately $2,500.
Okay.
The cost for year two is substantially less, because some of the costs year one are one-time costs.
Like the camera?
So year two cost would be approximately $5,000 for a neighborhood council. And one of the things that we did when we were looking at alternatives for having neighborhood councils broadcast their meetings or have them webcast, is we wanted to design a solution that would be turnkey. In other words, we wanted to develop a solution that would not involve much techno-savvy, and essentially, we came up with a process in working with the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, where a neighborhood council would film the meeting themselves, and they would take the tape or disc from the camera, drop it into the mail, send it to a vendor, and the vendor would take care of the process of converting it to a digital format and then posting it onto their website. And the thought was that the web content would be available really through three different websites, not only the neighborhood council's website, Dunn's website, and then lacity.org. So that's the concept that we developed when the proposal was put before you.
And is that still your concept?
That is still the concept that we're considering.
Okay.
Bong Wong, Assistant General Manager, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. I could address some of the other questions that you had about what's going on with neighborhood councils in general in terms of its use of technology. There are some neighborhood councils, particularly City Watch, which is a pretty well-known website that is adapting technology, myself and Carol Baker Thar, the general manager, on YouTube now, because they videotape a lot of meetings, and then they upload the video to the website, and that's at nominal cost. So in response to the motion, the department canvassed all the neighborhood councils and asked if they would be interested in participating. None of them responded favorably, mainly due to the cost. So if there is some solution to address the cost issue, I think there would be greater interest. There are neighborhood councils who have some tech-savvy volunteers on their boards that could probably do this in a much more cost-effective way. There, at some point, the department, with adequate resources, would like to offer that kind of capacity building for the neighborhood councils, but that's down the road. So there isn't any motion or city council action necessary for neighborhood councils who want to do this webcasting type of pilots on their own, and some of them are doing it.
So it's really, it's really the cost. Well, you know, I'm one of those that I think this would be a good use of their funds to... to do something like this, again, because it really gives them more visibility, it really increases their outreach tremendously. But I can understand, you know, being a little hesitant. I think Councilmember Alarcon was suggesting that maybe we meet our neighborhood councils halfway, maybe they put up half the money, then the council district where they are would put up the other half. I'm willing to do that if there was any of my neighborhood councils that wanted to be one of the pilots. I don't know if everybody wants to do that, but again, having said that, I will again say to all neighborhood councils, I think this is a great use of your funds. I know neighborhood councils who still aren't even spending their $50,000, so I'm not sure what they're waiting for to spend their money on. I'm not really sure why this would not be perfect use of their dollars to do this. And again, I think it would answer the question that BONC has regularly, which is, how's your outreach going? Because that's a very tenuous position for neighborhood councils to be in. A couple of them have risk decertification because of their outreach. Seems to me this would fall under the category of really satisfying that component. So, you know, I'd like to offer that up, maybe go back and canvass them and at least say, I know Councilmember Alarcon and myself would be willing to meet our neighborhood councils halfway if they would like to do that. But I really would like to see a pilot program. Let's get one of these up and running so that we can see what the problems are, and we can then, again, encourage more neighborhood councils to participate in this.
And the department is in agreement with the use of this tool as an effective outreach strategy, and we will work with the council to promote the application. And we think the additional resources will be a great incentive, and we will do another canvas based on that action and see what the response says.
Mister, we do have other speakers. I'm sorry? We have Mr. Parks, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Rosendahl, and then Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to move the two reports and also to make a technical amendment on the Budget and Finance Report on Instruction Number Three in the body. It should be Number Two as opposed to Number Three.
Item nineteen?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas?
Now, the three neighborhood councils wouldn't be so much picked, they would volunteer?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear. And then also, I'm kind of saying this tongue-in-cheek, but are they going to have like a bleep on these things where somebody says something that is derogatory or what have you? Who reviews it before it actually gets online? Is it going to be live or ten-second delay?
Actually, Councilman, the video would be on-demand, so it would not be a live broadcast, but would be a broadcast following.
But before somebody demands it and sees it, who's going to?
You bring up a very good issue, and that's something that we'll need to work with Dunn on in regards to a process. And I think that's more the reason why we really want to do this in a pilot fashion before we do a full rollout.
Uh-huh.
I guess from our perspective, the Internet is, what you see is what you get. And unless we were put in the position of screening the content, which is really not within the scope of our authority, you're pretty much leaving it up to them to determine the content.
And the Internet is not subject to FCC like Channel seven is and thirty-five and all of us, correct? Okay. All right, well, I guess it's the cowboy days on the Internet. Well, I just want to just remind these neighborhood councils, when you volunteer, be very careful as I look into the camera. They say the camera gives you ten pounds, so be careful what you ask.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, folks. Being the old cable guy, you know where I come out on this. Obviously, more is better in getting the community connected to the political process is a key process, okay? How are we going to do ITA the mechanics of this in terms of Channel thirty-five and thirty-six?
Actually, the process that we propose for the pilot would not involve Channel thirty-five. It would be a process where we're utilizing an outside vendor, their services, where once the neighborhood council has filmed the content of the meeting, they would drop the media in the mail, send it to the vendor, and then the vendor would take care of the process of digitizing the content and also posting it on the website. So it would involve, in terms of coordination, it would involve some coordination from Dunn and also ITA in terms of interfacing with the neighborhood councils for getting the process established for a neighborhood council. But from that point forward, it would be pretty much a turnkey process.
And in the turnkey, how do you see it? You have to have a computer and be computer savvy, is that what you're saying?
Well, actually, the way we've designed this process in this initial pilot phase is that you would not need to be computer savvy. You would just need to be competent in being able to use a consumer-grade camera and to be able to film the actual meetings that are taking place for the neighborhood councils. So there wouldn't be any other additional skills required.
So it wouldn't be on Channel thirty-five or thirty-six?
That is correct. It would be on-demand on the Internet.
On the Internet?
Right.
And like you were saying earlier, a little bit like YouTube in the context of that?
Along those lines, yes.
Okay, so say for instance, I got eight neighborhood councils in my district, and I would love for one of mine to be a pilot project because we actually have some really engaged citizenry that have really made an effort. For instance, my Mar Vista Council has 600 people voted in the last election. We just had a little gathering the other day, 3,000 people showed up. I mean, there is a tremendous pride there in Mar Vista for its community. And most of the leadership of all of my neighborhood councils, be it Wendy Rosen who does the Brentwood one, or the folks up in the Palisades that have an incredible council, or in Venice, or all the others, these folks are computer savvy, and they interact with each other through the computer, through email blasts and all kinds of other things. So we have that savvy at that level. So basically, how will you determine where your models will be? Who's going to get this opportunity first to explore this?
Well, we would put out the call and basically first-come, first-served, and some council districts are very interested in matching the costs, and so helping with the costs that we expect that response will be strong. When we did the first canvas, there were no responses mainly due to the cost.
And when you say maybe the council office would support it, what kind of monies are we really looking at that would cost, say, my Mar Vista Council to do something like this?
$9,000 is the per neighborhood council cost for year one. That's if they do not own existing camera equipment. If they do, then it could be reduced by a couple thousand dollars.
So basically, you will work with us and pick, how many demonstrations will we have?
We've suggested three neighborhood councils for the pilot. There's probably some expansion that we can do in terms of a pilot phase, but we probably wouldn't want to exceed a, excuse me, a half dozen, just in terms of manageability for the pilot phase.
So maybe six of us council districts would find ourselves potentially in this if we could move along with that? Okay, and how long will that pilot phase be?
We've allocated 12 months, but when we were in committee previously with Councilwoman Hahn's committee, we talked about a lesser timeframe, probably about six months.
And that's because then we can get a better look at it and maybe even expand it further, correct?
Yes.
Okay, what is the chance down the road, if you don't have a computer, but you do have a television set, and you have been a loyal fan of Channel thirty-five, like some of the folks watching this right now, how can they get engaged in this? Will we eventually look at Channel thirty-five and maybe Channel thirty-six of just doing it on that basis as well?
We're currently, ITA is working with the Board of Information Technology Commission and the Municipal Access Policy Board in looking at various models for relooking at how we do public access, education, and government access, PEG. So as part of that process, certainly, there is an opportunity, I think, for taking the content from neighborhood councils and putting that on some sort of one of the access systems.
Yeah, because what I, and I haven't stuck my nose too much into the cable end because I came from that industry and I'm happy where I am now, but I want to look at your programming lineup. There are times when my old friend Lloyd Rigler, who is now passed on, who was able to get Channel thirty-five as a filler to use his music stuff, which was great, classic music network. But frankly, I would like to see our Channel thirty-five more robust with city-related interaction product. I think neighborhood councils can be an expression of grassroots democracy. And so instead of using, God bless Lloyd Rigler, and I know he's in heaven, is to open up the channel and put this kind of product, because I think people throughout the city would love to see Ms. Hahn's neighborhood council that she likes, or Mr. Alarcon's council as they're working, or Tony Cardenas' her mine, and get a better sense of it if in fact it would fit within a menu that made sense in a programming sense. Can we look at that as well?
We'll certainly do that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much. I would like to ask a question for friendly amendment. I have asked it, and it's accordance with this effort here that we get street use, to issue three permits to three at random, we're selecting these at random, neighborhood councils, and get three street meetings of a neighborhood council next to a farmer's market somewhere in the city. I, you know, I'm for technology, but I'm more for people meeting in the street and having an opportunity to engage and try to get other people involved. So if I have a friendly second, we get asked that they create, do you understand my concept here?
I believe it's your thing, you're building on the outreach idea that neighborhood councils need to be more visible.
I'm building it, you put it in the street, and sometimes you get in this Internet highway and you get stuck in there. I'd rather have us spend money on organizing meetings in a park where there's a diversity of people, or near a farmer's market and allow the neighborhood council to meet, and people could pass by and maybe get involved and see what their neighborhood leaders are doing. I'm talking about this program here, a friendly amendment, that we asked the Public Works Department, do you pick three groups to do this webcast, right? That's technology. I want to pick three groups to help them have a good street meeting on a regular basis in a community where a farmer's market is. Because I think, and I'm looking at the Neighborhood Council Department, we got to get out to the public more. And this is good, but I will tell you, sometimes people who are involved in all of this stuff here get so tuned in to the computer that they're not tuned in to the people. So that's what I asked, that there be a little shared opportunity. I asked for a friendly amendment. I have friends some days, some days I don't have friends. So I guess I don't have any friends.
Is there a second to that? Sure, I'll start.
Okay, all right, thanks, Janice. Good, thank you. I got a friend, I got a friend in Janice Hahn.
Okay.
All right. The point I'm making, members, and I just want to be very seriously here, we've spent a lot of time in an ambitious way to try to help advance this cause and webcast, okay? I talk to neighborhood councils, and all I tell them, and I tell them, a cinematographer in Hollywood will go like this to say, what is the best shot that they want to get? I want neighborhood councils to tell me, as they are advisory to the city council and to the city departments, right?
Yes.
That is their role, what they want, what they want, because often, they get into this production, okay? And I would rather hear what they want. That's why I ask this element of some help with the departments to put them in, pick three at random farmer's markets that operate on Saturdays or Sundays, and help them have a meeting nearby in some way, so.
While the department certainly is in agreement with you about the need for neighborhood councils to be more visible in their communities, the concern that I have with introducing this notion about where they have their meetings with this motion may complicate and confuse neighborhood councils on this particular initiative. So that would be the only concern that we would have in terms of implementation.
Great. Thank you. With that suggestion and Ms. Hahn's comments here, and the maker of the motion who has a very evil eye right now, I want him to be my friend, I'm going to withdraw. I'm sorry, Richard. I'm withdrawing that, but I will come back to you with something to encourage participation. And as I do this, this is what the cinematographers do, they say, this is what they want to project in that film, okay? What I want people who advise us in the city to project what they want, not to tell me they have a bureaucratic problem. We're here to solve those problems for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Alarcon?
Yes, members, first of all, I want to make it clear, on the notion of Channel thirty-five, you're talking about over 80 neighborhood councils, projected 120 or so, times about an average of three hours a month, so you're talking about 360 hours of television, 360 hours of Channel thirty-five. The question would be, what do you delete from Channel thirty-five to find some 20 days of TV?
Jesus. Just kidding.
I can see that my comments at the retreat are taken to heart by Ms. Hahn. But so I think that frankly, it's just infeasible for us to send camera crews to that many meetings and do the Channel thirty-five programming. With regard to Mr. Labange's question, I don't think we have to go as far as the neighborhood council to find confusion on the recommendation he was making, because I was totally confused. But the concept of doing outreach, I think, is separate and apart from this particular request, which comes from the neighborhood councils. And the motion was actually made by Ms. Hahn, and the report that emerged is what we have before us. On the substance of the matter, I would recommend that we instruct, in addition to the recommendations of the report, that we instruct the departments to work with the city attorney, because the Internet and the issues of civil rights, I think, and freedom of speech, I think are things that we ought to be very careful with when we go into the Internet versus Channel thirty-five where we're regulated by the FCC. So I would, I think we should add that they work with the city attorney, and should there be any potential liability problems, that they should report back to the city council with those issues. Secondly, I would like to extend the opportunity to expand the report to include the opportunity to create additional pilot projects if the funds are identified and made available by the respective authority of the funds. I don't want to mention any names, but the bottom line is if their funds are made available willingly by a department, they should be given the opportunity to expand the neighborhood watches, the neighborhood councils' participation in the web service. If somebody would second that motion, I think the departments will be responsible in managing this in a way to come back in maybe a year with a report on the performance of this project.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon.
Segmented by Hahn.
Seconded by Ms. Hahn. Thank you. There's no further speakers in the queue. Mr. Clerk, do you want to break this up, or should we vote on this all at once?
Once before council, Mr. Parks moved both reports with a technical amendment to Recommendation Three in the Budget and Finance Committee Report to reflect Recommendation Two, and Mr. Alarcon made a motion, seconded by Ms. Hahn, to instruct departments to work with the city attorney on potential liability issues, and to also expand to create additional pilots if the funds are available.
Sounds like they're not incompatible, so if we can't open the roll and take it all at once, please open the roll.
Yeah, he's in.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Eleven ayes. And members, I just want to caution you, we are dangerously close to losing a quorum. So we have, what's our next item?
Item twenty-six called special by Councilmember Labange.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much, members. This is the long-overdue restoration of the historic North Hollywood train station at Chandler and Langasham. This is one of the oldest buildings in the San Fernando Valley. It's taken a long time to get to this point. We're there now, I will say no more and ask for an aye vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Mr. Clerk, if you would please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item, please.
Fourth with?
Fourth with for Mr. Labange, please.
Item twenty-seven called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl, and then there is one speaker card on this item.
Thank you, Madam President. We need a technical amendment on item twenty-seven per Mr. Weiss. On item number twenty-seven, we would like to see that it be adopted amid Conditions five B and five C from the BOE Street Vacation Report. Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then there is one speaker card on this item, Bruce Miller.
Hello, Madam President. I was only here for information if the Councilman had any questions.
So we're okay? All right, fine. Would you please, Mr. Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Thank you, Madam President. And item twenty-three, could we do fourth with on that one?
So noted, yes. Do we need to go back and do a motion for reconsideration on that? Okay, thank you.
Item thirty-eight called special for cards from the public.
All right, following individuals should come to the podium. Mr. Zuma Dogg. Mr. Zuma- Mr. Zuma Dogg. Mr. Matthew Dowd. The next name is something like Bambi. I can't read the writing. Bambi. All right, and then out to the San Fernando Valley for Donna Pierman and Sharon Brewer. Donna Pierman and Sharon Brewer.
I didn't realize that you were on me. Donna left a while ago. This is number 38, special events, fee waivers. Today, we have nine total for $48,872. We have two items, item H and I, that are USC fee waivers that have to do with move-in for new and returning students, that they expect about 20,000 people. If they just charged each person about a buck 25, you could wipe that out. Over three days, so far, we have $195,083 for special fee waivers. And of those three days, $57,536 is just for USC. I really don't understand why fee waivers are being given to the University of Southern California that is specifically for their students and not the general public, and that they need to start looking at these fee waivers, as I've said before, in that the city doesn't have money to take and pay for item, or fee waivers that the people asking for the fee waivers could afford. And at some time, I would really appreciate a way of finding out how you determine whether or not someone qualifies for fee waivers. And again, I apologize because I didn't know you were on me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on that item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
We, again, we're close to losing a quorum, so what I'm going to do when we get to adjourning motions is just go around and ask people to say the names of the individuals for which they want to adjourn, and then we'll go back if we lose.
Roll, please.
Item 41, I'm sorry.
41, yeah.
Next order. Next item.
That would be item 41, and that was being held for Councilmember Weezer.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Madam President, I'd like to send this item to Budget and Finance. Mr. Parks, the chair of that committee, suggested there's some issues related to finance, financial issues that would like to be reviewed in that committee.
Without objection. Mr. Clerk, do you want to open the roll on that?
Stand by.
There's no objection, it can be members.
Okay, great. Next item.
Council has motions for posting referral.
Okay, those items are, yes.
Can I just, on that motion, Mr. Weezer, just to nail it down, it's dealing directly with a budget instruction, 127 and 146, that was in the budget.
So noted for the record. Thank you, Mr. Parks. Okay, Mr. Clerk, I believe you were.
Council has motions for posting referral.
And the motions are posted and referred.
And I would clear the desk.
All right, great. Are there any announcements? All right, let's go around so that I know some people are up against a tight timeframe. So if we can go around very quickly and just say the names of the individuals for whom we wish to adjourn for the record, and then, time permitting, we can go back and let people say that. Why don't we start here, Mr. Alakon? Do you have any?
Very quickly, Sherri Lou Engbretson, Julia Blackhawk, Artenio Trinidad Mena, Patrick Holmes, and I believe there was one other victim of the Minnesota Bridge tragedy. I introduce this motion at the request of Becca Doden, my communications director, who grew up in the area and knows a lot of people in that area.
Thank you. And then, again, if we could just say the names and we'll come back around and you can do the motions. Anybody else? Mr. Cardenas?
Dave Chan.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn, do you have any name?
I'm hoping Tom will do. Hal Fishman. Okay.
Mr. Weezer? Mr. Labonge?
Mr. Hal Fishman.
Mr. Parks?
Yes, I'd have three, Art Davis, Linda Louise Eagle, and also Ruben Whittington.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Labonge again?
Nathaniel Dominic.
Nathaniel Dominic. I'm on this side. Mr. Rosendahl.
Colette Chanel.
Anyone else on this side? All right, great. And I'd also like to add, in case this hasn't been done, Janetta Miriam Scott Kilgore. Was that done? Okay, great. All right, let's start on this side. Mr. Alakon.
Very briefly, we have a lot of adjourning motions. I think it is pertinent for us to recognize the deaths in Minneapolis because of the connection that we all have with regard to the safety of our bridges. Should their deaths not be lost in vain, let us learn from this tragedy, and hopefully we will make sure that every bridge that we have within our jurisdiction and hopefully throughout California will be safe and secure so that others will not have to feel the pain as the families and residents of Minneapolis area are feeling as a result of this tragedy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. I'll submit it for the record, but I'll briefly say, with great sadness, we adjourn the memory of Dave Chan, who passed away on August 2nd from cardiac arrest. He was very young, and it was a tremendous surprise to all of us. He worked for the Information Technology Department of the City of Los Angeles, and he started on January 11th, 1999. And Dave was on his way to a very successful career with the Information Technology Agency. He was loved by all the people who worked with him. He was a very caring individual and always was willing to help out in any way that he could. Dave will be sorely missed, and he leaves behind a wife and three toddlers.
Thank you very much.
I just want to say, my office really enjoyed working with him. I think this should be all members.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Next, Mr. Labonge.
Yeah, and all members on the Minnesota Bridge tragedy, I think that's very.
Absolutely.
Members, we all know Hal Fishman, the great, great communicator, the great journalist who stood right there at the podium last year when we honored him. On behalf of President Eric Garcetti, whose notes are here, we all join in adjourning in memory of Hal Fishman, who truly was not just Los Angeles, but knew the world. He had the confidence of the people. He was always fair. Just last Thursday, excuse me, just last Tuesday evening, not even a week ago, I was at the Autry National Center on our behalf, and Mr. Garcetti on our behalf, and presented Hal with a tribute for his 47 years as the anchor, the key person at KTLA Channel 5, and also the 60th anniversary of KTLA. And then as I left the stage, because he was down there, I went over and took a picture with Hal, and he was more about KTLA, as he would talk about it, as opposed about himself. A great professor at Cal State, then San Fernando Valley State College. He and Dick Enberg got hired at the same time together and are great communicators. Hal Fishman is a beautiful man, is saddened. I stopped by the studio this morning because I was in a firehouse over in Hollywood when they told me of Hal's passing, and I asked that we all adjourn in his memory. He has many, 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 many awards in that. He survived by his wife Natalie and his son David, and the citizens of Los Angeles will always hold Hal very deeply and dearly to their hearts. He will be sorely missed. Hal Fishman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge, for that tribute.
Members, I also ask that we adjourn in memory of Nathaniel Dominique, who's the father of Bernadette Soder, who's a Los Feliz resident. He lived to the beautiful age of 91. He also is a retired city employee from the Department of Recreation and Parks, where he labored for 31 years. Nathaniel Dominique.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. I have three adjourning motions. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Art Davis, who is a world-renowned musician. He had his craft with the double bass. He also had a unique career in that he had a doctorate in psychology and divided his two careers between music and also assisting patients. He died on Sunday, July 29th, at his home in Long Beach. He had a world-renowned career in the fact that he was a part of the NBC Westinghouse CBS orchestras and also played in many Broadway shows. He survived by three children. Also, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Linda Louise Eagle, who passed away on June 22nd. She lived in Hartford, California, where she attended elementary school. She later moved to Los Angeles, where she graduated from Washington High School before attending LA Trade Tech. She's also affiliated with several churches, serving as the grand matron, Faith Chapter One at Mount Olive. She survived by her daughter and then one grandson. Also, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Ruben Whittington, a former LA police sergeant, was killed Saturday, July 29th. He was shot to death in the 300 block of Lemon Avenue. He was only 62. He was born in Norristown, Pennsylvania, served the Air Force before joining LAPD. He retired as a police sergeant and became an Arthur. He retired in LAPD in 1995 after 20 years of service. He operated the business in Walnut area called Mr. Handyman and wrote a book called Soldiers Behind the Bad. He survived by his wife of 25 years, his wife and a 25-year-old daughter.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Let's have all members on that. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, just a footnote first on Hal Fishman, who's appropriate than Tom Labonge, who's Mr. LA, talked about it. I knew him since 81, when I started doing my television, and we became close friends, and frankly, he was an inspiration to me. He was a good guy, you know, and he was a positive spirit for all of us, and so obviously, from all of us, he rests in peace. I'm standing also for Colette Chanel, a dear personal friend of mine, who just died last Thursday night at 7:20 at St. John's Hospital. I was with her most of the day Thursday in intensive care. She was a Holocaust survivor from Paris and came to the United States and settled in Santa Monica. She worked in a drugstore. Everybody loved her in the community. She got involved in the police support system with the Santa Monica Police and was a huge booster and a huge community activist and a dear friend, and may she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Any more on that side? All right, I would also like to adjourn in memory of Janetta Miriam Scott Kilgore, who passed away on July 19th. She was born on October 26, 1912. She grew up wanting to be a schoolteacher. In 1936, her dream became a reality when she accepted a teaching position in Henrietta, North Carolina. That year, she met and married the late Reverend Thomas Kilgore Jr. That was the beginning of a great love affair that lasted 61 years, and together they pastored various churches across the country, finally settling at the historic Second Baptist Church of Los Angeles. She was a giving person and donated to student scholarship funds and many other community-based and charitable organizations. In her passing, she leaves behind two daughters, Lynn Hendy and Reverend Ginny Cockcroft, three grandchildren, Dr. Robin Richard Mahir, Neambe Robinson, Katie O'Caro Robinson, and six great-grandchildren, Justin, Joshua, Taylor, Omari, Nia, and Solana. She was a woman of great faith, conviction, and compassion, and I suspect that Mr. Parks and Ms. Hahn may want to sign on to this too, as they knew and I'm sure worked with Dr. Kilgore as well. So, thank you very much. Mr. Reyes would like to make an announcement.
Yes, we will have Parliament Committee at 2:20, and I understand it's here in the chambers.
All right, great. Mr. Clerk, does that clear the desk? Okay, any announcements, anything else? All right, call the roll.